Good evening, everyone. It is now six thirty and I will call this regular work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. Our work sessions are informal and so we will go directly to the first item on the agenda. And there are a lot of folks around the room, so what we'll do is we'll go around and introduce ourselves so people know who's sitting around this table. And we know who's also in the room in the audience section. Elizabeth Kautz, Mayor of Burnsville.
Kara Schultz, City Council.
Dan Keely, City Council.
Heather Johnston, City Manager.
Jack Colb Williams, The Garage.
Christian Kibler, the Burnsville Youth Collaborative Coordinator.
Julie Dorshak, Recreation and Community Services Manager for the City of Burnsville.
Jenny Faulkner, Community Development Director for the City.
Steve Albrecht, Public Works Director.
Bill Coughlin, City Council.
Dan Gustafson, City Council.
Michelle Collins, City Clerk.
Skip Meanhaus, Economic Development Coordinator.
Chris Forsland, Licensing and Code Enforcement Coordinator.
Doug Nelson, Assistant Chief, Burnsville Fire.
Judy Johnson, Greater MSP.
Peter Frosch, Greater MSP.
Mike Langley, Greater MSP.
David Griggs, Greater MSP.
Okay.
Ms. Ruppin, Burnsville Planning Commission.
Neil Latson with Burnsville YMCA and Burnsville Youth Collaborative.
Justin Lassen, Burnsville YMCA and Burnsville Youth Collaborative.
Dave Bucksey of Burnsville.
Steven Jensen, ISD 191, Community Education and the BYC.
Tom Luoff, the Community Education Director for ISD 191 and BYC.
Welcome, everyone. And the first item is the update on our youth collaborative, Julie Dorshak. You're going to start off.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and staff. Thanks for the opportunity to come back after three long years of working on this program and this collaborative effort with my community partners that are with me here today. I'm going to just really briefly go through the agenda and what to expect this evening. So on our agenda tonight is just an overview of what the Burnsville Youth Collaborative is. And then Christian Kibler, our collaborative coordinator, is going to go through the after-school program updates and tell you about what's been happening at Nicollet Middle School. And then also kind of elaborate on some of the other collaborative efforts that the group has been working on. And then Jack will give you an update on The Garage and the Twin Cities Catalyst Music updates. And then we'll talk about what are the next steps and what are we looking at doing in the future for the BYC. Just to start us off, the Burnsville Youth Collaborative mission statement is that we exist to provide leadership to local organizations to partner with young people to develop, empower, and prepare them for success. So that is the foundation of everything that we do. Our partners include the School District, Community Education, as well as the rest of the School District, not just Community, but the entire organization. The City of Burnsville, of course, the YMCA, Twin Cities Catalyst Music. And then we also meet annually with a number of other stakeholders that help us to program and offer programs at the School District or with the middle school at the BYC. So this is really perfect timing. As you can see, we did hand out an annual report to you. We just finished our most recent fiscal year. And so some of those details will also be shared in this presentation, but it gives you a little snapshot of the work that our collaborative members have been working on. I thought I'd start with kind of who provides what and how is this funded? The School District is our fiscal agent and they do have program revenue, which they'll explain in their part of the presentation. The City, we do serve as a granting agency to the BYC. We have helped them to get and secure a number of grants. One of those was the Youth Prize Grant, of which we still have a little bit of those funds left. We're still working on implementing the evaluation plan, which is supported by that grant. The Otto Bremer Grant, in your background materials, you saw that we got a three-year grant, which we're just ending here, coming up here at the end of this year. We are eligible to apply for new fundings in January, but the City did assist them in securing that grant. And then we also allocate about fifty thousand dollars a year, forty-five to fifty thousand dollars a year, of our community development block grant funding to the BYC. And then The Garage, we provide that facility for the Twin Cities Catalyst Music to operate and facilitate their programs out of. That is part of the City's contribution to that particular part of the program. And then we also provide on an annual basis the maintenance and such for the facility. The YMCA, they are in charge of doing the data collection and they help us with the evaluation plan. And then, of course, the Twin Cities Catalyst, they manage The Garage and do their programs over there. We also have an overreaching collaborative model. And again, it kind of is the oversight of kind of everything that we do. We want to provide a balanced program that includes leadership, academics, enrichment, recreation, and wellness, as well as meet the basic needs of our students. And Christian will tell you all about that right now.
Great. So again, I'm Christian Kibler and I'll give you guys a little bit of update on our direct service after-school program over at Nicollet Middle School. So we started year one in two thousand fourteen in November with an average of fourteen students per day in that first year. And in the sixteen-seventeen school year, this past school year, our average daily attendance was sixty-seven. So we've seen some huge growth in the past few years, which has been awesome. We're serving sixth through eighth graders at the middle schools. So the program is offered Monday through Thursday from three PM to six PM, includes a substantial snack. And it comes at no fee to the students and we make sure each student has transportation home as well. Staffing is provided by both the School District and the Minnesota Valley YMCA as well. One of the cool things that's offered our students who participate in the program at least three times per week is they're offered a pass to the YMCA. So after programming or on Fridays and weekends, they can participate at the Y, whether it be playing basketball, swimming, or taking health classes. Just a last kind of number at this time, so far since two thousand fifteen, we have served four hundred and fifty students. All right, and then just a couple examples of some of the programming that we offer. We partner with the YMCA to give full scholarships for youth in government, which normally is a three-day, two-night trip where they stay in downtown Minneapolis at a hotel. In Model Assembly where they try to pass certain bills, and then Model United Nations where they represent a country. Our BYC students have represented Brazil, Senegal, and Armenia in the past year. And then the YMCA Multicultural Achievers Program helps students. It promotes college and career readiness. We have also gone on a college tour to the University of Minnesota the past two years. And in two thousand sixteen, we took forty students to the University of Minnesota for a college tour. Another cool YMCA program that we've partnered with is Design Squad Global, which is an engineering group that partners with a YMCA in a different country this year. We were partnered with a YMCA in Liberia to bounce ideas off each other, learn from each other while learning about engineering and careers in engineering. Let's see here. We've also done swimming lessons. We found that a ton of our students who are new to this country, a lot of our refugee population, in the program really has a desire to learn how to swim. It just so happens that I have taught swimming lessons in the past and I'm still certified, so we had fourteen students go through a swimming program. Most of them were at about a Level Two Red Cross Swimming level, if that means anything to you. And they moved on to, or twelve of those students moved on to a Level Three and the other two we're still working on. We also, as to stay on aquatics, there's a picture up here, as you can see, kind of a fun little niche that we found our kids really enjoy is log rolling. We offer community education classes in log rolling and our students have also latched on to log rolling, so we have a log rolling club at the BYC. Let's see, we also, again, offer music courses, which I'm sure Jack's going to tell you a little bit more about in a little bit. The summer program, again, offered through, for sixth through eighth grade students. Monday through Thursday, we partner with the summer school program to offer an enrichment piece at the back end of that day. So students, we do onsite activities at Nicollet that look a lot like what you would see in our after-school program, like log rolling and swimming lessons. We have a basketball team that practices. We have a coach that comes in, helps them with that. And then on Fridays, we partner with the Edge to go on field trips. Some of the field trips in the past have included going to Sky Zone, Valley Fair, Cascade Bay. I know there were a number of our students that when they went to Cascade Bay were super excited because they had never been to a water park. And that was, that was a really fulfilling day for our staff. During the summer program, breakfast and lunch and a snack are all served. And again, this program comes at no fee, no fee to the students. We have an outdoor education program that Wilderness Inquiry, which is a nonprofit out of the University of Minnesota, comes in and teaches outdoor education. And then at the end of the summer, we go on a camping trip. The camping trip this year, we took twenty students to the Apostle Islands up on Lake Superior in Wisconsin. It was a first-time camping experience for a lot of these students. We had an amazing time. And the year before, we went to Lake Itasca where the students all got to take their picture at the headwaters of the Mississippi, where the Mississippi starts. So that's been, the Wilderness Inquiry's been a fantastic partner for us as far as the direct service program goes. Again, just like in the school year, transportation is provided. And we have partnership with the BYC, with the YMCA programs. We send a lot of our students to Day Camp Streifland where we do things like the High Ropes Course. We do different team-building activities. We swim while we're out there. And then, of course, Twin Cities Catalyst Music. We go use The Garage this summer. We used a few, a few of the hotter days since The Garage had Grade A C to go and watch some movies over there and check out the recording studios and what's available there. And we're hoping to continue to expand that program. On some other program elements. So we also have our community website, which is designed to help youth in our community be able to find different programs and opportunities that are accessible to them. It's also a great way for us to share information about the BYC, what we're doing. We have a blog on that page as well. Another, another piece of the program is the Youth Advisory Board. We have sixteen active members. Twelve are in the program, two are alumni of the program, and two are high school leaders from VHS. And they help us to make, make decisions on opportunities that will be provided to students, as well as they've helped us decide, or helped us decide on field trips and design our BYC T-shirts for each school year. And then shared training. So we had our first shared training this year. It included staff from ISD 191, from Twin Cities Catalyst Music, and City Parks and Rec staff, as well as YMCA staff. And the training was led by a very dynamic speaker by the name of Michael Brandwine, who even won an Emmy Award for one of his TV programs on communication. So that was really valuable for our staff, as well as other staff from, other staff that work with youth in the community. And shared evaluation plan, I believe, we'll be getting to in just a moment. So we established a work plan in order to improve the program. A big part of that was the youth program quality assessment, which is a comprehensive assessment that helps us figure out where the program's very strong and maybe some areas we might need to work on. There's some information on that within your handout as well. We, some of our goals were to increase program participation, which we absolutely did this year, increasing our numbers to sixty-seven per day and even ending our last day. The program continued to grow throughout the school year, too, a day with a hundred and ten students. Let's see here. We also use pre- and post-survey to figure out how we were reaching students. And just to kind of paint you a picture, some of the highlights there that were, were really good for us to see were that eighty-four percent of BYC students reported an increase in knowledge regarding education after high school. Seventy-eight reported that they can help friends make positive choices after attending BYC direct service programming. And seventy-eight percent also reported having a plan and positive view of their future due to being in the BYC program. Great.
Jack.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to be here, Madam Mayor and council members. We appreciate this. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jack Colb Williams. I'm the Executive Director of Twin Cities Catalyst Music. As Christian mentioned, we are the nonprofit organization that manages and oversees The Garage just across the street over at seventy-five Civic Center. So a couple of things that I'm going to highlight today are just where we are at as an organization, how trajectory for things are kind of moving in the last year or so, and where we've been, what we've been up to for the last two years since I last was, I believe, at, in these council chambers, kind of giving an update on things. And I suppose the last time I saw a few of you was at The Recording Studio, which you can see in the picture here on this first slide, as the renovations are kind of coming to a close. So in the last two years, we've been really focused on sustainability for the organization and trying to determine, you know, best course of action for us to continue The Garage's work and build upon the legacy that it's had here for, since nineteen ninety-nine. So we're going on, gosh, now about eighteen years that that facility's been in existence. So we are, we are very firm in making sure that we continue to do that work for another eighteen years to go. It, now, a couple of things I kind of want to quickly highlight are just some of the biggest milestones for us as far as our grant dollars and some donations, corporate and individual, that we received. We just had our August fundraiser and we raised thirty-nine thousand dollars in a three-to-one match with the Gates Foundation, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. So we are ecstatic with that and now already starting to plan next year because we have to try to somehow match that number. We're very excited for the challenge.
How much did we receive from the Melinda and Bill Gates Foundation?
It was twenty-seven thousand dollars that were brought in. It was a three-to-one match. We organically raised just over nine thousand.
Okay.
And so they were able to multiply by three.
Great.
Which is an amazing opportunity. We're very, very thankful for that. Recently, I went full-time with the organization. I was working a couple other jobs up until about February of this year. So I was able to quit my other job and focus now solely on working for the nonprofit and working for The Garage. So that's been a huge milestone for us and this organization to provide that type of stability for someone that's leading, leading the group. So now we're looking at about an annual operating budget of about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, to continue our programming and continue operations at that space. Couple of quick updates with ISD 191 and Community Education. We are starting to pursue a CTE, or a Career Technical Education Certification, for the facility. We're still on track, as per two years ago, with our plan to begin to teach courses for high school credit out of the space. And that's been a huge goal of us, along with ISD 191 and Community Education, to start to provide that opportunity for students in this district to come experience the amazing facility that you have here in Burnsville. So we are very, very excited to continue on that path and things are moving along. And we're looking at, hopefully, fall of two thousand eighteen to start to begin that process, move forward. We're continuing to work with many of the post-secondary institutions here in the metro. McNally Smith College of Music, the Institute of Production and Recording, Henneby Technical College, and now we're starting to expand to Dakota County Technical College as well, too, to bring in, to bring in some of their students and volunteers that are looking for opportunities within the music industry. So we're very excited about that. We've expanded a lot of educational opportunities that are now coming out of the space, teaching recording classes at multiple different disciplinary levels, all the way from introduction all the way to advanced. So I feel like we're kind of getting on track to be ready for our CTE certification in about a year from now, in fall of two thousand eighteen. And then, as I mentioned, you know, some new community and county partnerships. We started working with Dakota County recently to bring in some students who are looking, just to kind of get their feet on the ground and understand some better options that are out there for them. And to be perfectly honest, you know, it was a little bit rocky getting started, but by the end of that session that we're starting to work with these students, we're seeing transformative, life-changing impact that The Garage, it was, as we all know, it can provide for young people. So we're starting to see that at the county level and they are very excited to continue to work with us and kind of move things forward. Thanks, Julie. So a couple more pictures of The Recording Studios. You can see the space. It's just gorgeous. If you haven't been in a little while, I'd highly recommend you to come stop by if you have some time. The modifications are now complete. I've just recently finished, actually, we received a grant from the Mardegg Foundation this last year for eleven thousand dollars for just equipment to go into The Recording Studio. So more workstations for students so we can increase our classroom sizes and our capacities, be able to work and operate out of the space. So there's tons of Mac, Mac computers everywhere, keyboards, microphones, camera equipment now, because we're going to start to expand kind of into video work and things, really trying to reach young folks of this community and really speak to the things that they're interested in and can want to continue to do. We are also in the midst of finishing our facility renovations to our main concert space. We just put in a new floor in the last couple of weeks, a new, brand-new stage. We did all of our lighting, so I want to thank the facility staff here from the City of Burnsville. They've been amazing, helping us to complete this project and it's gone off without a hitch. We have our first event in there on the eighteenth of this month, so just a couple of days from now, but we should be on track to finish. It's just improved the overall concert experience. I'm, like, sightlines are improved, sound is better. We have recitals and, you know, student groups coming in. It's just going to be amazing to see them step onto like a professional-quality stage that is now existing in that space, so it's incredible. Sound equipment is being well-maintained and cared for. As I kind of mentioned, you know, we're doing constant maintenance on the stuff that was provided to us from the city when we first moved in. We've just been expanding and adding to that over the years, but everything is A-OK. So yeah, if you have some time to stop by, I'd love to give you a tour.
So you're here at the Garage then, seven, seven days a week now, or five days a week? I mean, I see, I see the kids going in and out, Jack, so.
Yes. I try to be here about five, six days a week. But yeah, I'm operating out of the space during business hours, which has been, it, it, just having someone around in the facility again has been just amazing for us, so we're very thankful.
Were you holding some concerts on Tuesday nights?
There's, they come, they tend to come on weeknights, just depending upon, you know, sort of what's coming through and what we're booking, so it kind of fluctuates.
Yeah, because I can see when there's a whole lot of kids going into The Garage when I'm coming in for council meetings and work sessions. Yeah, nicely done. Thank you. And it continues to look very nice.
Thank you very much.
Done a nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so a few of our next steps as a collaborative, something that's really exciting for us is this year, we're going to expand our programs to Metcalf Middle School and Eagle Ridge Middle School, so that we'll have three different sites and hopefully we'll continue to grow and serve more students each year. We also want to increase program partners, so have more people come in that want to serve youth in our community and continue to enrich our programs. Again, as Jack talked about a little bit, expand use of The Garage, especially with the high school program, trying to get students in that space and even have them get credit for learning how to use the recording studio, which would be very cool. We also want to expand our collaborative efforts, so continue to have more shared training, have more, more youth services involved in our website, and also increase our data collection. So we want to be able to have some more information on how school attendance is affected by the students we have participating in our programs. Less, less behavior during school days and even outside of school day for students in our program. So that'll be really telling of the impact we're making in the community, as well as increased youth advisory board involvement. So have more students not only involved in that program, but also have those students having a little bit bigger responsibility. Something we really want to roll out is having mini-grants available to those students. So we put aside part of our budget so that students can actually apply for a mini-grant for the program to start their own club or get some equipment for the program. That's something we're really excited about rolling out this year. We also want to increase the service learning projects that we're doing throughout the community. One thing that we're hoping to roll out this year is to have a community garden at each middle school for our programs.
That is going to be really nice. Did you see the one that they put in at Gideon Pond?
Yeah, I did. I actually saw it today. I was there to help out with the first day of pre-take.
Those kids did it.
Yeah.
So, and congratulations on all of the work that you're doing with our kids in the summertime. What's the increase of your attendance from last year to this year?
In the summer program?
Yes.
So last year, we averaged about eighteen to nineteen students per day, and this year, we had forty-five students per day with a high of eighty-two.
That is great, because I, I have heard from some of the parents whose children are attending the program and how much they appreciate that that program is in effect. And so now that you're expanding out to Eagle Ridge, that will help a great deal. And to the Y, thank you so much, because that helps keep out our students healthy. And I see them, I think you also do a program at the Y, because I'm there a lot, for a basketball game that they have, or is that just open basketball?
A lot of times it's open basketball, but we have some, some memberships during the summer, some free memberships that were provided to give them a safe space to go during the day.
Okay, great, thank you. But nicely done. And also the work that you're doing in taking the kids out and experiencing the outdoors. It's a great experience for them.
That's our presentation. Any comments or questions?
Yes, Dan.
This is the first time I've had a chance to see what has happened since the changeover. Now, I'll admit, in the beginning, I was skeptical about this whole change, and I think it gets to be hard sometimes to make those changes for all of us, but it turned out really well. I'm totally impressed, the outreach that's going on. I looked at the pie chart of. I looked at the pie chart of who's involved over there, and you're really engaging the immigrant population, the minority population in our city, which is huge. And then, I was looking at the board members as well, and I was looking at the names on it, and those are names I'm not used to seeing. And so, I mean, great job, guys. Let's keep it up.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Dan?
Well, I just echo that. I'm very impressed. This is a great recap. The programming is very strong, the involvement of the Y. It's a great example of when community partners come together, some really wonderful programming and opportunities come, come out of it for the, for the kids. And, Jack, your studio looks like a professional recording studio. I mean, that place has never looked that good. That is fantastic. And so, having you there full-time, I'm sure, is just going to reap tremendous rewards and the, the goals and what you're looking to do to expand it is, is really exciting for, for someone who plays a little music now and then on my own drum set. I am thrilled with what's going on there and encourage you to continue to work on it. I think the community will continue to come out and help support with fundraising efforts and other things to, you know, that, that triple-to-one, that three-to-one grant, I don't remember the last time I've heard of a grant that had a three-to-one match. That is phenomenal.
Yeah. We also have community partners that don't need a match, like the Lions, who helped from the very beginning.
Yes.
So, the thing is, what people don't understand and don't know about Burnsville, we have from, oh, gosh, as long as I've been here, that the trend is to collaborate and to partner, because we can leverage our resources and get a lot more done. And that's what we have going on right now. And Mr. Amhofer, Tom, you want to say something as the...
We'd just like to add a couple of thoughts.
Come here so our residents can see who you are.
Real brief.
Yeah.
First and foremost, we have a number of partnerships with the city.
Absolutely.
Senior Center's been a longstanding, outstanding partnership. With the YMCA and the garage and the BSC has been phenomenal. The folks do outstanding work. In thirty-one years of doing this, I have never seen anything as successful, as quickly, and as in-depth. So, kudos to them. But I wanted to give a shout-out to Julie. Between Julie and the city, the partnership has been phenomenal. Julie is an outstanding asset. Without her, we couldn't have done anything that we've gotten accomplished in the amount of time that we've had. She is outstanding. I can't say enough, and I would be remiss to let this meeting go without acknowledging all the hard work that she brings to it and all the hard work and the support that the city provides to the efforts that the school district is making. So, thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you, and thank you for the work that we do. This is what people don't understand, is that we take care of our students and our, and our elders.
Thank you.
Here in Burnsville. Thank you so much. It's a great partnership. Anything else for Julie, Chris, and Jack? Yes?
I just want to compliment the, the school district and the Y as well. The, I know what the city has put into this, going back to the inception of the garage. And I believe that the, the fate and the lives of those kids is now in the hands of real professionals who really do excel in their areas. The music opportunities, the educational opportunities, the activity opportunities, the food now, there's just, that is a great opportunity. I see on your goals that you want to expand to the other two junior highs, Eagle Ridge and Metcalf.
Yeah.
So, I'm sure that's a sizable goal, but one that we hope you achieve, because having it in all three, to encompass all three, the schools and those, the kids in those schools, they're going to love it.
Yeah. Jack?
Just, I also wanted to point out a couple of community partners that have been helping us along the way, just to acknowledge them. So, of course, the city of Burnsville, ISD-191, Bosch, and Electro Voice have been massive supporters of us.
Yes.
Bolton &amp; Mank here in Burnsville, also Minuteman Press here in Burnsville, and then, of course, the Rotary and the Lions Clubs for all their support and their assistance.
Thank you. I'm glad that you mentioned all of those partners that help us make things successful here in Burnsville. And we wouldn't be the community that we are today without all of the help of the people of this community. So, thank you. Thank you to the school district. Thank you to the city and Julie for all of your work, and thank you to the YMCA. It is a great partnership, and we thank you for helping us with all of that. And with that, thank you so much. Continue the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Greater MSP, the return on investment presentation. And we're very happy that we have our partners from Greater MSP here, and everyone can come to the table. And Peter, Peter, you're, I think there are four chairs. Yes.
We're good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Skip, did you want to do, make some introductions?
I will, I'll let that up to you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah. So, this is, this part of the presentation is to have a conversation with Greater MSP, and we continue to look at our contribution and our investment in Greater MSP and the members of the council, and our EDA board is the one who asked that we, the same people, would like for us to have this conversation with you. Skip, is there anything else that you want to add?
No, Madam Mayor, I think we should let Greater MSP do their presentation.
Okay, very good. And thank you for coming. And if you can just reintroduce yourselves so our folks who are watching us from home will know who you are.
Sure. I'm Mike Langley, the president and CEO of Greater MSP, and I'll be starting the presentation. But I'd like my cohort, colleagues to introduce themselves as well.
Peter Frosch, I'm the vice president of strategic partnerships at Greater MSP.
I'm Judy Johnson, director of investor relations at Greater MSP.
And David Griggs, I'm vice president for business investment and research for Greater MSP.
Welcome, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff, and community leaders. It's always an honor to, to be in front of a body such as yours. I remember one of my first community visits, five, six years ago, when Greater MSP was just coming together, was actually in this room to present to the, to the same body. And it's great to be back. On my way over here, I was reminded at the, the beauty of Burnsville, as I was driving down the road, there was a, a flock of wild turkeys in, in my way, and so, I slowed down and let the wild turkeys pass. It reminded me about how beautiful the city is, and although I don't see, think we'll see those wild turkeys around, as we get closer to Thanksgiving, they'll probably hide a little bit. But anyway, it is great to be back. I, I'm going to kick it off and give you a little bit of summary information, because we want to go straight to the kind of conclusion that there's tremendous value in our partnership. It is the Greater Minneapolis-St. Paul partnership, and we have now, are now in our sixth year of operations, and the awareness of, of building awareness of the region is probably one of the most important tasks that we had, is the formation of the organization and the regional partnership was to improve the visibility of, of this region to a national and global audience. And through that, we've seen a thirty percent improvement in awareness of our region and its ability to compete for competitive projects. Our Make It MSP initiative, which is our talent retention and attraction initiative, probably one of the most important initiatives and pieces of work that we do as a partnership, that is our most important asset, and our most important opportunity to promote this region is to ensure that folks that are here stay here and work here. And we know, as we grow our economy, we're going to need more participants, and so, attracting more talent to our region is very important, and Make It MSP does that. You'll hear a little bit more about that. Since our, since I was here last, the region, through our partnership and the communities that we work together with, have added four, forty-one thousand, over forty-one thousand direct jobs, and within direct and, and multiplied jobs, over two-hundred thousand jobs in the region. And the, just the projects that the partnership has worked on has produced more than three-point-two billion dollars of new, net new capital investment in the region over that period of time. The sectors of strength of our region were, are essentially food, water, and health solutions, and we've created initiatives in all three of those. We were awarded a designation by the Department of Commerce for the Minnesota Medical Manufacturing Partnership. Our water technology initiatives and our water summit, our third water summit is happening this fall. And then, we now have a cohort of all of our food and ag company leaders around one table, looking at the future of, of our leadership, global leadership in food and agriculture. The Regional Air Services Partnership, which has just been recently formed, is a business collaborative with the airport to ensure that we are continuing to see improvements in air service, both domestic and international for our region, which will support all of our businesses. In terms of identifying product improvement and improving our region holistically, we produced, three years ago, the first Regional Indicators Dashboard, which has essentially become a national model among metropolitan regions for how we measure our progress in all aspects of community growth. And from that, we've, we have a regional competitiveness working group that really determines our competitiveness against other metropolitan regions in America. And, and finally, a focus on breaking down regional disparity issues are, part of our Make It MSP initiative, a key part of it is the retention and attraction of people of color and eliminating disparities in our region. So, those are kind of the headlines of the work that's been going on and, and some of the, the big numbers that go along with that. I would point out that when we formed Greater MSP, one of the parts of our inclusiveness was we wanted to ensure that we had leadership from suburban municipalities on board. So, we, we wanted at least one suburban mayor to serve on the board of directors of Greater MSP as it has grown. And I'm pleased to say, Mayor Kautz, that your leadership since the very beginning of the organization has been tremendous and frankly, transformational to bring the message of suburban communities to the leadership of the region. And we appreciate your leadership. As noted on the slide there, we are very fortunate that we have aggregated both the public, private, and institutional leaders of this region around the table that provides us a very strong voice on both product improvement issues as well as selling our region. As far as our partner advisory council, we also are very, continue to be very appreciative of the involvement of both public and private leaders from all of our fourteen counties within the, the MSA, within the state of Minnesota. And both public and private leaders from each, each of our counties and areas of our region are included in that. I'm going to turn it over to David now to give you some more detail in, in terms of some of the business investment activities and, and results that we've had.
Let me just ask the members of the council if they have any questions of view with what you had already presented, so we can just, any questions or...
No, I did notice there was a Dakota County Commissioner, Kathleen Gayler, is on the board as well.
Yep.
Along with IC St. Paul and Minneapolis, I would expect that, but it's good to see the city of Burnsville and Dakota County is represented on this board.
There are, I think every county, every county has a member on the board.
No, not every, not every county. Every county has a representation on the partner council, but on the board, it's actually, I think we have six of our, six of our counties represented on the board. And, and then, as I said, mayors, urban mayors and suburban mayor in your, in your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. David, welcome.
Thank you. And according to the invitation, thank you very much for allowing us out here. I'll cover business investment and research, and you'll notice on this slide, very intentionally, research runs across the bottom of all of the business investment activities that we do, includes export development, foreign direct investment, business retention, and expansion, as well as business attraction. Just to kind of level-set where Greater MSP plays in the whole process of, of a project, the bulk of our time, according, on this slide, is pre-deal. So, Greater MSP's role is to cultivate a lead, to maintain a lead through the, the length of time that it goes through a decision period, giving it wonderful resources in terms of, of research touches, making sure that we're in front of them. Some companies take years before they get to a, a project. It is extremely important that we have partners like Skip, because every project we work will be won or lost at the local level. We can get a company only so far, and then, it, it falls into the hands of, of professionals like Skip to make that project happen in our region. And here in Minneapolis-St. Paul, we're blessed with some of the, some very good economic developers, professional, courteous, and quick, and that's what you need. On the research side, you'll see on the bottom here, one of our perception studies, and Mike alluded to some of the, the data that we, we got out of that, but the two slides there, we did a perception analysis in two thousand and twelve, so we could kind of level-set on what do site selectors and corporate executives think of our region. And then, we, we resurveyed that same cohort three years later, after we had had a chance to, to develop some marketing, some messages to them. You could see in, in the, the slide on the left, we gave a, an open-ended question, "Tell us three things you think about Minneapolis-St. Paul." And some of them were, were very nice and said, "Cold, cold, cold." And you could see how big the word "cold" is. We did that same study, same time of year, same condition, same questions.
In the winter.
We did it in the winter. And you'll see that on that second one, "cold" is still there, but it's smaller, and it's been replaced with "quality workforce." So, what people think about us on the corporate and site selector level is exactly what we want them to know, that if you want a quality workforce, you're going to find it in Minneapolis-St. Paul. You also see healthcare, medical devices, quality of life, beautiful, friendly, these are the things that people think about us, and these are the images that we have been reinforcing for corporate site selectors, again, and, and real estate professionals. We do a number of other research. Here's the thirty percent that Mike had mentioned. One of the questions that we asked them was the perception of our region. Would you bring a deal to us? And the, the folks that, that did this is a third-party group out of New York. They've been doing this for forty-plus years. The increase that we've had is faster and more than any other region in the country. So, so our increase is exponentially better than, than any other region in the country, and we're building on that. The research that we do is also very localized. So, when we look at Burnsville, we can tell a company exactly who Burnsville is according to data, and we do this on a fairly regular basis. These are, this is data points that are updated at different points through the year, some of it monthly, some of it yearly, but we maintain all these data points for you and for, for companies around the, the world. The other thing that we do is we look at inflow and outflow of, of your workforce. And one interesting thing about Burnsville is you really are a poster child for the regional economy. You've got a significant amount of workforce that comes into your city to work, and a significant number of, of workers that leave your community to work every day. Only four thousand of your residents actually live and work within Burnsville. So, you know, a win for us in, in anywhere in our region means potential jobs for your residents, because they do go out for employment. Mike had mentioned a few of the business development initiatives that we've got, the recently started air service partnership. We've got Minnesota Export, Minneapolis-St. Paul Export Services, designed to help our companies export, to develop new markets and new sales. And then, the Minnesota Medical Manufacturing Partnership, again, awarded to us by the Department of Commerce for our expertise in medical devices and medical technology. A map, I can't do any presentation without a map. I love maps, and this one shows you where we've been around the world. I will tell you that every one of those dots is intentional. It represents a market that we need to be in for a particular industry and for a particular reason, even domestically. Each market visit is extremely intentional to either a site selector cohort or to an industry. And I'd love to go into the details of that with you, but time doesn't really allow us to, but know that we are around the world representing Burnsville and our region. Finally, a few years ago, we were created using a data... Finally, a few years ago, we were created using a data point that showed that Minneapolis-St. Paul was lagging behind some of our peer regions, and we decided that we should take another look at that very same data point to see where we've done, how we've, how we've performed with regard to job creation. You could see in 2001, we kind of plateaued. We've had some ups and downs, 2008, we certainly had a down. In 2011, we were created, the green line going down to kind of delineate when we were created, and you could see by 2013 or so, we had hit that same plateau again. But instead of stopping, our regional economy has continued to grow, and that's exciting news for all of us. I'll pass it on now to Peter to give you more.
Sure, I want to make sure we get to questions.
There's a question, yes. Dan?
It would be safe to say that the economy has dramatically changed during that same period of time. Do you have a sense as to how our region has fared by comparison to other similar metropolitan areas where we may have improved a little bit better than most that were sort of, you know, rising with the way, the wave of the economy or the rise of the economy?
So we compare ourselves to other metros based on industry. We compete against different metros and different industries, so we don't always look at it holistically, but we certainly do that as well. We fare much better than the U.S. average. There are some communities that are better than ours, but as opposed to the impetus for starting Greater MSP, lagging behind the, our kind of benchmark communities, we are now keeping, keeping up.
Sure. Our starting point, unemployment rate here was national average. Since we have started the upward trend, we've been about a percent below national average, and the metro within Minnesota is about another half percent below the Minnesota average. So unemployment rate's been low. Our workforce participation rate leads the nation. And then Peter's going to talk a little bit more about kind of our, how we benchmark holistically across all activities in the region through our regional dashboard work that we do.
You asked a big question, so.
I'm going to have another question.
Yes, sir.
It shows in my background here, on a couple of occasions, you've actually brought some companies to tour Burnsville. Our staff was not involved in it because of how your process works. Do you know why those companies did not pick Burnsville?
Without having the exact project in front of me, I'm not sure. Please.
If I could, Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
Those visits were probably three or four years ago, so David would have to have a phenomenal memory.
I'm just kind of curious because you got this information that they looked at and they didn't pick, I was like, well, I'd like to know why. We're trying to figure out our economic development in the city right now.
I would say that that is the holy grail of what we do, is knowing where we fall short on any project. And typically, we don't find out. The typical site selection process is a process of elimination. So a site selector is looking for any reason to eliminate a community because that's, in the end, they're trying to find one. So oftentimes, we don't know what that reason might be.
Yeah. And one of the things that we have to be aware of is that we're built out, we don't have a lot of acreage, and we've had that conversation even with grocery stores who were looking and choosing places that have more green land rather than trying to look at demolition cost and so forth. And again, we don't have much land.
No.
So, and the other thing is how do we stage up so we're attractive? It's the same in any real estate industry, whether it's home or commercial. Skip?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, I can tell you from memory that the first visit was a company that was looking, it was a data setter company, and it was looking for existing buildings, but I cannot tell you why they did not pick our building. The second one, I don't remember the industry it was from, but I do remember they were doing a worldwide tour of the region. I believe they saw six different sites in one day, and one of the site we showed, or Greater MSP showed, was in the MRQ.
Okay. And didn't we have one that we showed the Johnston Building too?
No.
We didn't have anybody look at the Johnston Building?
Not via Greater MSP.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor. Sure. Well, so just building off the question you asked, who are we competing against and how are we doing? These are the kind of regional questions that we have to be asking and answering because we organize locally, cities and counties, but we compete as a region. And so, you know, very quickly here, you know, there are some big questions that we've started to ask and answer together as a region, you know, through the partnership of Greater MSP. So, including, how are we going to position this region to compete and win in the global economy? And so in 2013, for the first time, you know, through the partnership of Greater MSP, not the 20 staff of Greater MSP, but the partnership together, said, okay, we're going to pull McKinsey in, they're going to give us some pro bono support, and we're going to really run the data to understand what makes up our economy and how do we position to win, you know, given the macro trends that are out there. And so using that, okay, based on the data, how are we going to come together to actually seize that future we want? We put together a shared strategic framework, which we had never had before. We're going to tell our story more effectively. David gave you some of the results of that. So once we started telling our story, we did it better than any other region in the country, you know, according to the consultant that we've worked on, or worked with. We're going to prioritize talent because that data look helped us validate that human capitalism is our number-one competitive advantage. That's what this place has always been about, and it has to be even more so going forward, so are we going to double down on that? And it's about building in our global sectors of strength, both David and Mike referenced that a little bit. We're a tremendously diverse economy, which is one of the strengths of this region, and, you know, focusing on doubling down those strengths is critical. So to your question, so, you know, where do we start with that strategy? How do we stack up? You know, one of the first things we did, because the problem was back in 2013, when we asked CEOs, we asked mayors, we asked heads of philanthropies, people had different answers of how are we doing? And if everyone has a different answer of how we're doing today, you're not going to be able to move forward together. And so we spent 14 months, talked to over 350 regional leaders, including many people in Burnsville, and got a view, a shared view of what, how we're competing. And we put together this regional economic dashboard, and you've got a copy of this in your packet, but one of the really important elements of this on that front cover, those different organizations, Greater MSP, ITASCA, McKnight, Minneapolis Chamber, Regional Council of Mayors, this isn't just Greater MSP's dashboard, this is a shared effort because we need to have the same understanding of what's really important so we can move forward together. The idea is that we're having this credible data, we're going to build understanding among leaders, it's going to help alignment, we're going to start working together on the things that matter, and we're going to get better. I mean, that's the idea. So it's about data, but it's about driving data to action. You know, so what can we do on, with our future workforce if we know that that's a critical competitive advantage? I was in this room talking about this a few months ago.
Yeah.
To the CEO group in Burnsville. We have a huge challenge in this region where we have more economic opportunity than we have workers. It's the good version of that problem, but it's a problem. And one of the areas where nothing was happening in this region in a coordinated way was focusing on professional talent, the most mobile workers, the degreed and creative talent, extremely low, almost nonexistent unemployment, huge economic impact, the folks that your employers have the hardest time getting. And so we built something called Make It MSP, which is about supporting employers with retention and traction, welcoming newcomers to this region, attracting tech talent, retaining professionals of color, and now supporting entrepreneurs. This is an effort that involves hundreds of different organizations, from Fortune 100 companies to meetup groups. The way we did this is we kind of built a movement that brought all kinds of different partners together to just exchange value. So this looks a lot more like Airbnb or Uber than a traditional organization. And because we built it that way, it's scaling really fast, and it's leveraging a lot of resources with relatively low input. Within a year and a half, we created makeitmsp.org, which is a digital platform employers are using to direct their prospective talent to choose this place. We built a recruiter toolkit with videos and all kinds of other assets that are free for employers in Burnsville and every other place in this region. We created a talent tips newsletter every couple of weeks. So talent professionals in employers, public sector, private sector, can be, we're training them about how to use these tools, and we're giving them the latest information we've got. The big first-year goal is about welcoming 10,000 newcomers, getting over 300 recruiters using these tools. We've talked to thousands of actual people, workers, in this region, and we're using that insight to drive this work. I invite you all to come on the 27th of October, we have our second summit for Make It MSP to really see how this is working. And that's an example of, that's one big thing that's happening, but we're using that as a model to learn how to do a lot of other things, you know, in sectors and others.
So that completes our presentation. We wanted to leave as much time as needed for questions, but we greatly appreciate, goes without saying, your investment and long-term participation and leadership in the Greater MSP partnership. We believe that's extremely important, and we certainly want to continue that relationship going forward.
Okay, thank you. As Councilmember.
Just an observation, I cannot tell you how great and informative this is. It was five or six years ago when we got in, and we get a lot of great charts and reports. I mean, I thoroughly enjoy them, but as you well know, the human face-to-face contact, you just, you don't absorb it the same way. And I think, you know, in a way, Councilmember Gustafson, I think, was the one that brought up, let's have MSP, Greater MSP, back in and hear what they're doing. Maybe that was a little bit, what are you doing, you know, what have you done for us lately? I think he certainly got, when we voted for this, you were on council when we voted for this.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that this was sort of like an insurance policy, you're going to pay a premium in and get the benefit of a bigger group. So it's leveraging our 25,000 commitment against significantly more from lots of other cities. But it's very, it's always very difficult to tie that back to something in Burnsville, and of course, we have some examples of some potentials that have come through. Given some more land availability, we might have a lot more visitors coming to us. And so there's some other tools that we're working on to help potentially put ourselves in a better position to be one of those that, you know, could raise their hand and say, we've got some land over here, and give, skip some more tools, and hope to do that. The MRQ is maybe a longer way off, but pieces of it could be in the short term, and that'll give us some opportunities to compete. But, you know, it is, and I appreciate the feedback that we got in an email exchange, it is something that we have to have a longer view and a more global perspective on. And that's in contrast to what we discuss and battle with at council every day is, you know, fighting to manage a limited budget and try and get and invest in the right things and prioritize things and reduce our tax base to our taxpayers. And so when you, when you look at cost drivers and, you know, everyday expenses, which today is healthcare costs and labor costs, and you try and control that, and it's hard to get mentally out of that and into, I need to invest in something that's going to make it better in the future. So it's truly jumping out of that daily view into that longer view, and it's not easy for anybody, really, in this position, elected to be responsible for other people's money. And so this is very helpful for me. I didn't know we had a few door knocks of some land look, and that's good to know. And I think there's more opportunities that'll come, but we have to sort of stay in the game to be able to take advantage of those.
Appreciate that. I'd like to just make a recommitment here. Obviously, David mentioned how important it is to work with Skip and staff, and I want to reiterate that, that, you know, we're a resource, and we want to make sure that, you know, any opportunity there is for us to provide additional research, additional data, additional granularity to information that will help you as a council, as a staff, we will redouble, you know, our efforts. I think we're very responsive to questions and opportunities to help you, and we want to reiterate that again. I would be remiss if I didn't also give you, Richard Davis, our Chair of our Board, asked me to personally thank you for your involvement, but also, he couldn't be here tonight, he wanted to come tonight, but he's out of town. I know he provided some communications to you guys, and I appreciated him doing that. But he wanted me to specifically say how much he appreciates Mayor Kautz's leadership on the board, and also how important Burnsville is, not only to Greater MSP, but also to U.S. Bank. So, a lot of great customers in this town. So, but yeah, we'd like to reiterate our support for anything we can do to find those new opportunities, that, you know, as you, as a community, look to not only greenfield development opportunities, but now your redevelopment opportunities in the community. We have a lot of experience and folks that could really want to help in those redevelopment opportunities as well. So anything that, you know, if we, if there's a working team or some opportunity for us to work with staff and council more directly on project strategies and planning in the future, we'd like to be included in that.
Okay. Dan?
I do see the value of regional marketing, I see that big picture. My concern, for me, that I've been struggling with is we have very limited EDA dollars, and most of those are committed, so we have very little money, if none, to actually help something locally if something were to come along. And we're struggling now to get votes to even raise that EDA levy up so that we can do things like that. My question to you is, if we reduce our contribution or fees to the, for Greater MSP, how would that change things for us as a community?
Well, I think all of our municipal partners are now at fair share, including Minneapolis has committed their full support, both for the remainder of this year and budgeted for next year. So I know there was some question about support. So all of our municipal partners that are members and/or investors in the organization are now at fair share based on their population. And although populations are changing, we'll re-up, you know, we'll look at those in the next year to make sure everybody's still at the right population levels. But, so that would mean that you would be a community that wasn't contributing at fair share, although it's an opt-in model, as you know. There's no specific requirement that you, that you have to be an investor in the organization. It's a, it's essentially a commitment by the city that it wants to be a key leader in this region, and basically, for the purposes that Councilmember Keely discussed in terms of, we're all investing in the future of this region. And when I see the ins and outs, the number 50%, almost 50% of your population leaves the city every day to work for great companies that are expanding and locating throughout the region, the projects that we are involved in together are actually creating jobs for Burnsville residents, as well as those residents are coming in from other cities or contributing to your economy. So we truly believe in that the regional aspect is most appropriate, and certainly we want you to maintain your leadership on the Board of Directors.
Yeah, absolutely. Bill?
Just to further up those questions, or that question. So are you saying that ultimately Minneapolis did not reduce its 125,000 to 10,000, is that correct?
That's correct. They did, but they've now, we've worked with council and mayor's office and CPED to restore that money for the remainder of the year.
So notwithstanding the council's vote, the mayor's office were able, was able to?
No, we're working directly with CPED on that, supported by the, by council members and the mayor to restore the money.
And if they were to stay at $10,000, what would, what would have happened?
Well, we haven't crossed that bridge, so we, you know, there was no decision made by the board or leadership of our organization to do anything until we had an opportunity to sit down with council and the mayor and work it out, and we did. And it's budgeted for next year as well.
One of the things I think that everybody also needs to understand that in Greater MSP, 80% is private investment. 80% is private investment into Greater MSP, and 20% is public. That means cities and counties. So that's what it is. And we hold that, because I'm on the investor standing committee, and we hold that, that those goals in terms of, it doesn't go over for the, for the public investment, it stays at 20%. And private investment to the organization is 80%.
Mayor, we've actually leveraged probably another $600,000 annually of other grants, private grants and from companies and foundations. So it's actually about 85, 15, so 85 private, 15. So it's actually about 85, 15, so 85 private, 15% public. We certainly understand the burden, you know, one of the reasons we're a 501(c)(3) is there are two purposes. One, for education of the community and its development, but two is to reduce the burden of government. We're leveraging for every dollar of public money that funds economic marketing and development for our region, over $4 of private money is being raised to do that. So this is a hugely leveraged public money and we certainly understand the limitations that our municipalities and units of government have, but we believe that the fact that we're, most of our money is coming from the private sector is a strong endorsement for the work and the quality of what we do.
Okay. Dan?
Well, two things. Number one, that's great information that I, it kind of brings back memories of when it was first pitched and brought to our attention that it was a big leverage of private money. And so in terms of match, it's about a, you know, as you say, similar to Jack's, yeah, three to one match. This is even better. So if it was, you know, that we're thinking of, you know, what is our contribution getting and driving from the public sector or the private sector, it's a great ratio because it does lessen the burden on us, but we're getting ultimately the benefit one way or another. Not necessarily measurable in an immediate payback today or a deal that we can put our finger on today, but these things don't operate that way. So there's my comment to the long view. I'm curious, Coon Rapids, Lakeville and Plymouth, calling out my fellow council members in Coon Rapids, Lakeville and Plymouth, why are they not involved in this effort?
I'm going to, Judy has a day job with us, she also has a job as a council member in Plymouth, so she can answer that question pretty well.
Wow.
Yes.
Yeah, and she wasn't afraid to come here and to tell their story.
I had no idea, I apologize, but I'll still put the challenge out, why in the world are these three cities not? And then, I mean, in a way, it looks a bit odd that there's just three metro cities that have avoided this for six years.
If I could, councilmember, those are three of our market cities.
And they're our market cities.
They're our market cities. That's not the only three cities in the metro area.
It's just our market cities. Okay, sorry.
Madam Mayor and councilmember, thank you very much, great question and thank you, they are the market comparables in the city of Plymouth. We compare ourselves against all of you every day as well. I can speak to Plymouth directly, I've been on the city council for 20 years, I was mayor for four years, past president of the League of Cities and I'm on the Metro Cities Board, so I really feel what you're doing every day and I really have great respect for it and appreciate what you're doing, especially here in partnership with Greater MSP. The city of Plymouth has lagged behind the city of Burnsville and cities like Brooklyn Park and St. Louis Park and others who I think are very progressive and have seen the long view and established EDAs much longer than we have. We just established ours in January. We just hired our first staff member within the last two years. The city of St. Paul just stole her, so we'll have to replace her, she didn't like going through the Loiree Tunnel every day on her way to work, but I do. So I keep that up, but let me tell you this, I used to work at the Twin West Chamber of Commerce prior to coming to Greater MSP. I did our business retention expansion program and I was in charge of economic development and fundraising. And when I heard about Greater MSP and this formation of that partnership, we at the local level, at the chamber level and many other private-public knew we needed to have this partnership in order to get ourselves off that best kept secret list, as Doug Baker would say, and compete nationally and globally. So Plymouth, in a way, has been inspired and we've made the case and Greater MSP has come out and talked about creating an economic development program, creating an EDA. Just this past year, we even had to train up council and, you know, the advantages and what the tools are regarding abatement and TIF. I think they actually see TIF as a good tool to use because of the Butfor case and it's an opportunity and we just did. So Plymouth is behind all of you and I see that in the upcoming future, once we get our program up and going and we budget ourselves up, we'll also be on the investor list, but the timing just isn't right for us. And those other cities, we're in communication with them. In fact, we've got a city, a very small city, kind of in a far-flung part of the region that just contacted us today to talk about investments. So we're out there all the time talking with our communities and making sure that they understand what those assets are that we can offer, whether they're an investor or not. And we do have cities coming to us, renewing every year and asking us again how that they can be more involved and become an investor. So it's a work in progress, but those communities do understand the value, but they, just like each one of you, have to understand and make that commitment and we're very hopeful that they will.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I really appreciate your coming tonight and I hear it, I get the emails and I think everybody also gets those emails, but because I have the information with regard to the work that we're doing at Greater MSP and see the value, because with the slide that you put out, I know that there are many of our citizens who go out of Burnsville to work and that's why I always say, jobs and economic development have no boundaries, because it serves the greater good of the people, so we need to always make sure that we're all working together, so there are jobs for the people that we have here. You can probably look around this table, but for the people who are on the city council, oh, and Jenny and Skip, they live in Burnsville, Heather lives in Eagan, and I think if you look around, some of our staff members live outside of Burnsville and come to work here. So jobs have no boundaries. Economic development has no boundaries. I remember when Shakopee, with all of its green land, got Shutterfly and Amazon. A lot of our people found jobs there because some of the things that they did was to do, was to have a job fair at our workforce center. So it created a lot of jobs for the people of our community, but it didn't have to be in Burnsville. We didn't, we don't have the land and as Dan spoke about, we're looking at how do we build the toolbox for us, for economic development? We need to really be bold about how we look at this toolbox and it's just not one piece. This piece talks about how we market the region, but in that regard, Burnsville is also being marketed.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Daniel?
One point I forgot to bring up earlier is, it's, I tended to focus myself on the jobs-producing projects. You know, we think of, let's attract more businesses, but we don't have the land necessarily. But one way that we can, and I think we will benefit, is we do have some projects that are, you know, residential, like.
Apartments.
A high-end amenity-rich apartment complex. Another one that has already come to us that is going to get going in 2018. So what will help drive some of that, those renters or the people wanting to live into that is if a project happens to be another city over, even if it's Shakopee, they may choose to live in Burnsville because we have a regional mall, we're right off the interstate to get into downtown, to go to events, sporting, whatever, entertainment, dining. So we have a tremendous advantage as a place to live. We may not have a ton of available space to put, you know, a manufacturer or a production facility or a business office per se, but we still have some available growth opportunities in high-density residential. And now that we've opened the door to rental, we can take advantage of some of that demand that will be driven by some other projects that may be nearby or even over into Rosemont possibly. So there's still a way that we can get some influence if we can't necessarily, you know, win that next business investment.
Okay. Bill?
Well, and I did a lot of research tonight before we came. I looked at some of the successes and failures you've had and I appreciate the information about Minneapolis, because I assure you, when I came here tonight, I was pretty sure I was going to reduce your 25,000 accordingly, because Burnsville's not a rich community, we have significant budget pressures on our citizens. And now, I have to say, I'm not sure, you know, depending how the bulk goes, where else go on this, but to your, just to make comment, Dan, it was already presented tonight that we're, that there are all kinds of jobs for professionals that are, go unfilled. So when we build those luxury apartments, if it's, any of them are built south of the river or somewhere by, apparently, yeah, those people can get a job.
Demand will be there.
Because the demand's already there, as I said, that was one of the problems. So I look forward to hearing from some of the other council members as to, as to what their view is on this matter.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. One of the things that we're doing, and I don't know if you have heard, but we're looking at reimagining our Burnsville Center and it's 96 acres. And I know that one of the things we're going to need from you is some of the data that you've collected and to also work with the Minnesota Retail Association. So to make sure that we put that together. One of the things that I know that you are very good at doing is how do we phrase those questions, because we're going out and doing focus groups and Kara Schultz, our council member, is going to be leading some of that work along with another member of our planning commission. So we're looking at how we frame the questions when we do these focus groups. We have an opportunity here on October 20th to submit our application to get to the next level with the Bloomberg Foundation. And the Bloomberg Foundation had set aside $200 million for the mayor's challenge. And so I signed us up and we were privileged enough to get a consultant to come in and work with us and worked with us yesterday. So now we're moving forward because we believe we have a good opportunity to really look at this. And so for me, in understanding how we dig and dive deep with the help of our partners like McKinsey and others, that there are resources that we can also get from you and to get your help.
Well, Mayor, we'd be pleased if we were invited by the city to utilize our resources, our research resources. When other cities have asked us to come in and help them on a particular study or project, we've been more than willing to do that. And I think there's a direct return on investment to you in terms of our time, our professional expertise and frankly, the products that we can provide as part of those studies. We'd be more than happy to work with you on the upcoming project and I think we could add a lot of value and give it a regional context that would be very helpful to you. So just know that that's on the table if that would help with your decision on resources.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly one way we can leverage our membership with Greater MSP is, and I don't know that we've really necessarily thought about it in that context, to actually use them as a outside resource, inside-outside resource too, to help us market ourself. I just want to make one comment that I think I made six years ago. As someone who's spent a lot of decades in marketing, this is about marketing our region, it's about marketing our city, and marketing is the first expense that is the easiest to cut when times are tough. We've already gone through some really tough times and thank goodness, we're not, we're in a different place, a much better place, as your chart alluded to. And I think it is still important for us to market ourselves in our region. I believe it is a long-term investment. I couldn't help but think of Mayor Droste from Rosemont.
Droste, yeah.
Droste and sitting at the MVTA board meeting when I was on it the prior time and listening to him say, I've been at this table paying dues for 20 years and still had not received a major MVTA service into Rosemont. But he stayed in because he wanted to stay relevant, he wanted to stay at the table because he knew eventually the opportunity would arise with the shifting demographics, population growth, the college, that it would happen. And it's happened.
Yeah.
And a bus depot was built and there's service in the city of Rosemont and it's only going to grow over time. So there's a good example of a very long view that the city took and their council, it wasn't Mayor Droste that was only making that vote, it was the city, the city council making that vote to stay in, involved with MVTA, to get that eventual benefit back and that will continue to grow. So this one's a little shorter, I think, than that. I had my hats off to Mayor Droste for his long-term view and staying at the table. I think we need to stay at the table and with that, I would like to move that we vote on securing this 25,000 payment and continue our membership in Greater MSP.
Okay. There's a motion and I'll second that. Is there any other thoughts?
Just a question.
Yeah.
If there were a reduction in fees, would we still receive those resources to help with the October 20th deadline we have?
Councilmember, we're committed to help Burnsville regardless of your investment or not. It's just that we believe that the commitment is a two-way street, partnership's a two-way street and we need your, we need your help, but we would be happy to do the work regardless.
Okay. There's a motion and I second that motion. And if there are no other questions, all in paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And the motion fails. I'm very sorry.
So I'd like to make a second motion, that we tender a $10,000 offer on the 25,000. And so we would reduce our amount by 15,000 and that would be my motion.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? One of the things that I'd like to ask is that with this kind of reduction, and I don't know, because there's a policy in place and the investor committee is meeting tomorrow and I don't know how they would look at that in relationship with all of the other cities in terms of fairness in all of that. So there is an issue of fairness throughout all of those other cities and their contributions. And I can tell you that if it was something here in Burnsville, whether it's the school district or us or anyplace else, to say, well, so-and-so does that and they do this, the fair and justness of it all. So Heather?
Can I just ask a clarification question? Was the motion for the 2017 or the 2018 contribution?
Is the motion for the 2018 or 2017? Because the 2017 contribution is what we need to pay.
And we haven't paid that yet pending this conversation.
That's right.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear what we're paying.
Yeah. And then there's the 2018.
Well, for me, it was the 2017, only because it was, this conversation was late in coming or it was part of the schedule. And I, and just as a side comment, Mayor, I would have brought this forward, you know, some years ago, except that, a couple of years ago, but you, for due respect to you for sitting on the board, I didn't and I appreciate that councilmember Gustafson brought it forward for this discussion. So for me, it's 2017.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, all in paper, please say aye.
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 Aye. Well, discussion, if you may.
Yeah, okay.
I don't want to lose our seat at the table and if the majority of this council, surprisingly and shocking to me, doesn't believe that investing in economic development is a priority, I'll accept the 10,000 because I want to stay at the table and hopefully we'll continue to.
Yeah, I don't know whether we will stay at the table, to tell you the truth.
Well, I think we will unless there's a penalty for reducing our contribution.
There's staff and it goes to the investment committee and then the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's possible that they might.
That's the question, will we stay at the table?
I'm sorry, sir?
At 10,000, will we stay at the table?
We appreciate, we appreciate any involvement of Burnsville in the partnership. It would not be a fair share, it would be known as, and it would be very difficult for the board.
To say.
To support, you know, involvement at the board, for instance, as part of a non-fair share issue. All members of our board are at fair share. So that would be an implication. I certainly would, you know, take the issue to the board and let them decide accordingly based on the consistency of the policies.
Yeah. And it has to do with being fair and just.
So can I ask you, sir, did you tell, was that part of the discussion that night with the city of Minneapolis? Did you tell them when they voted to 10,000, you told them the same thing?
Yeah, that was, we weren't present for that, but when we discussed it with them later, that was certainly part of the discussion.
And Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Judy. And thank you again for serving on our board and the Investor Relations Committee because they are the ones that take a look at these issues. And when the city of Brooklyn Park did decide to make its investment. And when the city of Brooklyn Park did decide to make its investment in Greater MSP, they were under an impression that it didn't have to be at fair share. And the mayor was very helpful in that, and the committee was very helpful in that. And Brooklyn Park then decided to make their investment at fair share.
At fair share.
And so, I just wanted to give that as context, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Because that was an issue, and Brooklyn Park is the same population as we are. And they didn't want to, and I said, "No, you have to be at fair share." And that's part of the, of the strength of being at the table and having that kind of voice for what is fair and just. Bill?
I always like clarity in the answer, so I'm, I'll try to ask the questions to clarify. First of all, is it your, is it yours, on a scale of 1 to 10, 10 being for sure, 1 being not for sure? If we reduce it to $10,000, on a scale, at scale, sir, what is the likelihood then we would not qualify or we'd be disqualified from sitting? That's what I'm trying to understand. Because already you've not given a yes or no. It was, "I don't know." So, I'm trying to get your sense of it.
May I answer that? Because as a board member?
Excuse me, Mayor, I asked this gentleman.
I'm happy to respond. It's the policy of our, of the organization and the board that all board members will be at fair share.
Yeah.
So, Burnsville will lose a seat at the board.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I look at these things in terms of fair and just. And so, we will lose our seat at the table as a board. So.
My answer to council member Gustafson was that if Burnsville elects to make a $10,000, 501(c)(3) contribution to, to our, as a charitable nonprofit organization, we certainly would accept the funding, but it would not, it would not qualify as a fair-share investment in the partnership. It would be appreciated, but it would, it wouldn't qualify as a fair-share investment.
In all due respect, I have concerns that your organization is more concerned with the money instead of the leadership qualities of the people that sit on your board.
Not even, not even closer.
That actually disturbs me.
We have unbelievable, unbelievable leadership in this region, public, private, and institutional. And we're honored by everyone who serves, you know, at every level, at the municipal level, at the county level, at the state level. What you guys do in the municipal level on a day-to-day basis is a huge commitment. We know that, and we appreciate everything you do. We know that's a, it's a very important task, what we do. We're honored to do the work that we do as a, as the Economic Development Partnership for this region. And we appreciate every, every individual, every, every dollar that is invested in our work. There's no question that we appreciate that work. And it's, it's about getting results. It's not about, it's not about the money.
Yeah. It's about fair and just. And there are other mayors that are, have great quality, have been mayors for a long time, like Gene Winstead and Mayor Hovland. So, there, there's a lot of great mayors in this region who are willing to take that position. So, we will because we are not at fair share. But they will be, they are at fair share. And as someone who sits on the board, I will abide by the board's policy. You have to be at fair share. And it is about fair and just. And it is one of our values that we talk about, that we are fair and just. So, there is a, council member Coughlin?
Well, I'm going to do something I can't recall that I've ever done, but I will do it. I'm going to withdraw my motion. I'll make a new motion that we support the full $25,000 in 2017, but that will revisit this issue again in 2018. And I really, really, really have mixed feelings doing that, so. And all based on what was stated in the last part. But I, you know, that's for 2017, so that's my new motion.
I'll, I'll second it, and I, with comment.
Okay.
This was new information to me as well. I didn't realize that any change in our contribution would actually jeopardize a seat. The value of having, and I know we all understand this, I'll just state it for the record, the value of having a member of this group sitting at the controlling board and the investment committee goes far beyond the value of that dollar amount. Because the influence, especially that Madam Mayor has, is so passionate about the city of Burnsville. In my mind, she's on that board advocating for Burnsville probably more than the rest of the region because that's who she is. And it's, there's a significant value to having any one of us on that board. And I'm glad we are on the board. I don't want to lose us, I don't want us to lose our seat. Because this is not a year-to-year deal. This is a long-term investment. But thank you very much, Councilmember Coughlin, for recognizing the value of it and withdrawing your previous motion and making a new one, which I'm delighted to second.
Okay. You withdrew your motion. There was a second, so the second of the motion, understand that the motion was rescinded.
Yes.
Okay. So, there's a new motion on, on the table, and it's being seconded that we stay at our fair share with Greater MSP at $25,000. And if there are no other comments to make, call the question. All in paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
Okay. So, does the clerk have the division of the House? Councilmember Gustafson, were you a yea or a nay?
I was a yea.
A yea, okay. So, it's for the one. And thank you. And I will see you at the investor meeting tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I understand this was a tough discussion, but we want to work very closely and earn your trust for the long term. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And good night. Drive safely. See you in the morning. The next item on the agenda is the establishment of the fire escrow account pursuant to Minnesota Statute 65A.50. Presenting this evening is Christopher, our Licensing and Code Enforcement Coordinator, Chris Forslin, and our Fire Marshal Doug Nelson. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
If I can get this called up on here, we'll get started.
Sorry.
You have a cricket sound effect.
So, you know what we're going to do, gentlemen? While you're trying to get all of that up, we're going to take a short recess. Yes. We'll take a short recess and then we'll reconvene. Okay, we are back. And I will reconvene our work session, and Councilmember Keely will join us as soon as he, he gets in here. So, then the item that is before us now is the establish fire escrow account pursuant to Minnesota Statute 65A.50. And presenting this evening is Christopher Forslin, our Licensing and Code Enforcement Coordinator, and Doug Nelson, our Fire Marshal. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. What we're, way back when the all-day work session occurred, staff was directed to bring back some additional information regarding establishing a fire escrow fund. And what the fire escrow fund actually is, is a reference to Minnesota Statute 65A.50, which is a law that allows for municipalities to request that a portion of any insurance proceeds, a from a fire or explosion, be set aside to create, be used as security to either abate hazards around there or to, as far, even up to demolition of the properties. It's a, it's a useful tool, we believe, and it may, it may be helpful to us more because it's been staff's experience that our current processes, which are the hazardous building statute 463, or through the legal system, can sometimes be, and I know a few of the council members in here have been through this as well, very slow and labor-intensive. And what it's been for enforcement staff as well as public safety is the, we've, are, we see an increase of complaints and also dangers to the community as a whole from these structures remaining unsafe. And we'll have some examples as we go through this right now. Those funds can only be used for demolition cleanup or securing of the damaged structures. When I say securing, we've had instances where kids have gone into some of these. We've had instances where the property owners have ignored our postings, our warnings as well, which creates another hazard for them as well as first responders who have to go after them and rescue them again. The funds are, as we laid out in the background, are released at the discretion of the authorized official. It, it doesn't necessarily need to be through the fire department. And as we progress or we work with the insurance insurers, we can release those funds discretionary-wise. I believe both Chief Nelson and myself have had some experience using this system in other cities that we've worked at. And I certainly found it to be a valuable tool when we've had some of these structures that have existed. Usually, what the process is, let's see, whoops, go back here. There's about 90 cities in Minnesota are using them right now, and several of them are quite large. Minneapolis, St. Paul, or St. Cloud, where I come, came from, as well as Duluth, as well as a lot of smaller cities. And one of the beauties of this is that the funds can only be used for certain actions, securing, repair, demolishing the structures. And there's some mechanisms in place that we can't use those funds till after 45 days of receipt. So, it isn't just an automatic thing. And if, if we're entering a contract to do so, or the property owner or the insurer provides that, we can release those funds also. So, it isn't like we're just sitting on them, not making them available. It's when we have some assurity that they'll make those corrections. And we've had several instances around town where that has happened. A little bit about the procedure to establish this is it needs to be passed by resolution that they've adopted. Department of Commerce through the state of Minnesota will notify any insurance companies in the state that that's our intention. And then, in the event that we have an incident that occurs, we have to contact them with the insurer and company within 30 days of our intent to escrow those funds. The insurance company would send those funds to the city and be placed into a trust account. And the property owner either makes the corrections or finds somebody and enters into a contract to do so. Then we can release those funds. It's actually a very straightforward process. The beauty of it again, though, is these funds are coming from those who are required to pay that. It's not coming from the taxpayers directly. And I think that's really important. Few properties that we've had that this may have been helpful to, or we're going to talk a little bit about, we had a fire at, on Park Avenue back are we're going to talk a little bit about, we had a fire at on Park Avenue back in July of twenty-ten before I started here. And using at that time, our legal process, which would be the hazardous building process, we ended up going on almost till we didn't demolish the pro the process of the property until November of twenty-twelve, almost two and a half years after the fact.
And I got a lot of calls.
Everybody got a lot of calls. This is this is the one I walked right into when I got hired.
A direct impact to the quality and the look of the neighborhood.
Absolutely. And in interim there, we're always on that knife's edge of are somebody going to go in there is is eyes, you know, complaints from neighborhood, like you said. This is a good example, I think, of where, you know, we we followed a straightforward system, but I think with another tool in place, we might have been able to accomplish this in a more timely fashion. Countrywood Drive, this was an incident too where we had some issues, not only with the property being posted by the fire department, but the occupants continued to go in and out. So we had an unsecured property. We we had some issues there. What it also shows is a little bit of the debris that we encounter and some of the the complaints I know we've had from other properties, Mr. I I think Mr. Nelson might have some feedback on this too. As far as complaints that we would get typically following a fire would be that smell, the soot, the debris laying in the yards, kids entering, and I'm sure the police department probably get those too.
That would be accurate. As part of the firefighting operation, a lot of times we're forced to remove contents out of the house and they end up in the front yard, particularly things that have been burnt, things that are contaminated with carcinogens, that type of thing. In in many cases, and this would be one of them, if it's not cleaned up, they stay out there and then it's it's in a neighborhood with kids and kids start getting it. You can put up barrier tape, but that's not going to keep the kids away from things that can hurt them, whether it's in other people's fire debris or getting into the structures themselves.
We we think we can get a better, we've we can find a better way with this funding to perhaps get a better plan in place for addressing some of these concerns over time, so they're done in timely fashion. The fire that happened on Cedar Bridge is a good example. We've got our little yellow piece of tape all around there and some tarps. Probably not going to cut it in the long run. This is just an example. We didn't have, I don't believe too many issues with that other than we we still have some open permits on it right now. But this has had the potential and we and we can look at it. We see there's some perhaps some structural damage to it too. I was never in these fires, so it's hard for me to talk about exactly what happened on the inside, but certainly.
But managing the neighborhood.
Exactly.
Yep. It's an issue to the neighbors. It's very a very passionate issue to the neighbors. And anytime you have a fire damaged structure, there's an inherent safety hazard with things. There's sharp things. There's the buildings degraded. If people start climbing around in there, they can, the structure can fail in certain cases.
Fire on Circle Drive, this was quite a intensive fire. Believe this was the structure that was completely demolished down eventually and rebuilt on using the same foundation. Again, we're looking at two years out, almost three years where we had to, we didn't have a process in place other than the hazardous buildings laws take it down.
Dan?
Some of these are these like insurance issues where the owners not giving insurance money?
Yes.
Occasionally, that is an issue. When a when a fire occurs, just to so council knows, when a fire occurs, we'll go in, we'll put out the fire, we'll take care of the problem, we'll initiate an initial investigation. Sometimes they're quick, sometimes they take a little while. And then when you have insurance companies involved, they will send out, depending on the dollar loss on something like this, on a higher dollar loss fire, they're going to send out their special investigators and that process can sometimes take a month. So yes, there is that. And if there is any evidence of any criminal criminal aspects to it, obviously, the insurance company is going to delay that. However, in most cases, when we talk about this escrow process that we're that we're bringing forward to you, in most cases, it it will be a non-issue. The the people, the the insureds and the insurance companies work together right out of the gate and they get things taken care of. And so it's just a matter of exchanging paperwork. The cases we're talking about where this process would be important are for the ones that that drag out for the, you know, that are excessive, you know, have an excessive hazard and then aren't getting dealt with either by the insurance company or the owner. One of the ones on this list, the insurance company paid the homeowner and the homeowner took the money and ran and the house is still sitting there.
Sitting there. Bill?
And I recall the all-day, that's an issue I raised. Sometimes that does happen. Sometimes if there's a mortgage, they'll write the check to both parties, but if there's a free and clear owned home, the the insurer doesn't have an obligation to rebuild. He may have, he or she may have that obligation to the city because it violates all kinds of laws. But they otherwise they could take the money and run, and that was part of the reasoning for bringing this up.
And and I believe this also serves as a little more incentive for the insurance carriers to make sure that their insured have a plan in place. We're sitting on their money. They have an investment already that we're we have available, and I think what we'd get is a lot better response, you know, in on that. It is, you know, it is a motivator on that end of it.
Well, one of the the phone calls that I received was someone was putting their house up for sale and having a hu a house two doors down has a direct impact on whether that house is going to sell or not.
It's very.
Or the value, because the comps around there then also degrade.
Absolutely. It's it's very frustrating for us. We're we're following all the mechanisms we have currently in place. Yet the wheels sometimes move very slow and there may be instances where we can take care of some of these problems using this. I'm very clear in the background that we know it's not a cure-all. It's not a solution for everything, but it's for those handful, very small handful of cases that we encounter that use all our resources too. And that, again, goes back on the tax rules, which I personally don't like either. I would much rather have those responsible be paying for the actions of their insurer. So this is not just apply to residential either. It also applies to commercial properties, which is a benefit in some, one of which right now we're dealing with with the KFC on Coney Road Five with some of the debris out. We've been getting complaints on that during our enforcement process. And shortly here, we'll, if we had this mechanism in place, we could take care of that and they'd pay for it directly instead of assessing it on the taxpayers. That's an example right here where we could have used that. And I think the house that we're talking about, sorry.
Could I ask, is what is going on with that case? I mean, these other examples were residential and can can I understand where they they might just say, take the check and run, but a business.
The Kentucky Fried Chicken, they've been they've been in having discussions with their insurance company. They were at an impasse over what the insurance company is going to pay versus what KFC thought they needed to get their building fixed. It sounds like that is starting to finally seek some resolution here fairly quickly. So that and that news came within the last week or so. So so I think we're moving forward on that one.
And I believe that if we would have been holding a portion of that, they may have been a little more motivated to come to an understanding where we could have taken care of this in a lot more timely fashion. And yes, we're still getting complaints on it, but it sounds like we got some news anyways. And then the house on Judicial Road, which is taking a great deal, year, well, going on a almost two years now of we, a fire that occurred there essentially gutted the inside of the structure. And we have not seen the insurance money being used for that purpose. It's been basically all the homeowner doing it at his own pace, which is fine if he's making progress. But right now, we still have a house there that's gutted. And we don't really know if it'll ever be reoccupied again, because we don't know if the insurance money is still there. So we're we're a little bit frustrated with this one. This may be an instance where we would have got some more motivation by the homeowner or the insured to have kept at it and give us given us a stable plan to do so. Summary, you'll, we believe it's it's a useful tool. It's one more. We need every one we can get to get to some of these problems. I believe that it's important that we take some of the burden off the taxpayers and put it back on onto the insurer. And again, serves that as an incentive for the insurance companies so they can get this done in a timely fashion. Again, provides non taxpayer dollars in case we have to abate it for safety reasons, which we certainly have concerns about also for our first responders who have to go back in. And gives us a better plan of action on how to how to solve these things that we can hold them accountable for. It's fairly straightforward process, and I think we can easily administer it with a minimum amount of staff time. That's kind of our thoughts in there, and we certainly are looking for direction from council and if they want to proceed with this or or not, or if we can come back with more information.
We have a question. Dan?
I think we talked about this at the all-day too. As Bill alluded to, in some mortgage companies, they end up being on the check when it comes from the insurance company. And some of them hold funds themselves until work is completed. Would they release funds to the city under this ordinance or how does that work?
So my understanding of it, when when this, if we were to adopt this process, when the fire loss occurs, we would send a letter to the insurance company. I normally deal with the insurance companies as part of my job. And so what I would do is I would send that letter off. The insurance companies themselves know to check that list because because of the number of communities that are currently on the list. So I would send that letter to them and then they would send that check to the city of Burnsville. City of Burnsville would put that into a separate account.
I'm just trying to figure out how to avoid hire them hiring contracts with just a partial funds and when they have several contractors coming in.
If they do that, then we can release the funds.
We can release the funds immediately.
A lot of times the insurance company won't release the funds till the work is completed and then they will, it's like, okay, well.
Right. And one of the conditions for this to not kick into effect is if they sign in, sign an agreement where the insurance company is paying the contractor directly, then we wouldn't, we would be out of that. We would not be in that.
It gives us some discretion to review those processes too. Do we, do they have all their ducks in order? And yeah, if we're comfortable with that, we can release it then. Then we move along that process. I think that's very helpful.
Okay, Bill?
And just as an aside, and I'm not, I don't mean to speak for mortgage companies, but I would, I I I would get more confident. If I was a mortgage entity, I would be more confident if the city's involved that way to make sure at the end of the day, either the asset is totally redone properly, you know, to to some degree, because then that's the bank's security. Or secondly, if if it's not going to be done, it's going to be torn down, then they know that 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 will be handled. And then they're not on the hook, which they ultimately could be through a foreclosure process, ultimately back in the hook for city assessing other types of fees, et cetera, to to their assets.
And that very condition exists on the Judicial Road.
Exactly. And require permits get pulled. All the other safety items that we need to make sure that that house again is structurally safe, sound, and we eliminate the hazards. That's the whole purpose of this.
But the other piece too is that it restores the neighborhood
Yes.
into the quality and the visual appeal of that neighborhood. And you don't have neighbors right next door being frustrated because nothing is done for two years, for three years. And, you know, they get tired of it as well. And then they think that we're not doing our work, our job.
Madam Mayor, that's a great point. When when somebody experiences a house, a structure fire and they lose their house, it it affects not only that family, it affects everybody around them. It truly is a neighborhood event. And the longer that that lingers, the greater the impact it it's spread beyond just that family that's involved.
We we think it's worth a try, as stated in the background too, if it if it becomes laborious or pain, we can we can walk away from it too. It's an option, but it's an extra tool that we think that we could use, make, do our job better.
Well, the funds have already been paid by the homeowner. And when this event happens, it's a tragic event. And all we're saying is that we're going to take part of that money that is already part of the law and put it in escrow to make sure that the property is restored and the neighborhood is returned to its quality of life.
That is correct, Mayor. And is as the process is moving forward, if if the the insureds and their insurance companies are working together with the contractor, then the city at that point, you know, will have, will have a good idea that things are moving forward favorably. We will release those funds and it's a done deal. We don't want to compound their problems.
And everything.
Right.
And then the the neighborhood is restored and the visual appeal of the neighborhood is restored. Members of the council, staff is asking for direction to move forward with putting into place this escrow fund through the through the Minnesota statute sixty-five A point five zero. Dan?
I'm glad we brought it up at the all-day. I think it's a kind of a just do it. I don't think this is something that takes a whole lot. I mean, it's giving us a tool that we don't have now that we have, it's created lots of issues that we have no control over. And as you stated, Madam Mayor, the neighbors wonder what, why isn't the city doing something? And, you know, there's certain things we can do, but they take a very, very long time to complete. And so this can provide motivation for the owner and also speed up the process and get it remediated. Because I couldn't imagine living next to a house that was burned and just left.
For two years.
For two years. That is, that is just unheard of. I mean, it would, the neighbors must be just beside themselves in frustration and anger that their that their neighborhood has been turned into that sort of look and feel because it's been let go. So absolutely, positively. We have a member of our insurance company, our insurance industry here that might want to comment on this.
I don't pull him into it. He's here for the next item.
Can you bring him to the table, Dan?
I was just wondering if you might want to comment on this from the insurance perspective, but certainly from the city's perspective, I I support it a hundred percent. And I think it's worthy to note these emphasis points. The withholding would not or does not occur if the insured files evidence of a contract repair within thirty days of agreement on the final settlement, the insured consents to payment of funds directly to the contractor performing repairs, or the insurer gives notice that the city, to the city, that there will not be withholding because of the repair contract. So, I mean, anybody doing diligence to the process and and doing the right thing and getting it remediated, this this doesn't apply.
Absolutely.
This tool comes into play when you have an alternative situation.
Yeah. And I'll, and so it's clear to everyone that's listening and everyone around this table, put an ordinance in place that really speaks to that. If the insurance company and the homeowner is doing what they need to do, then all we're doing is facilitating and making sure that their permits are pulled and that they are in compliance with code.
That is correct. This is basically an insurance policy for the city that doesn't cost you anything.
So, members of the council, direction to staff. I'm saying that we move forward and direct staff to bring forward an ordinance for us to adopt.
I agree, agree.
Okay. All righty. There's consensus. Thank you so much. Thank you. The next item here is the nominations for the Community Builders Award. And you have, oh, no, the next item is the update on the architectural ordinance review. It is. I'm so sorry that that we we had you sit through all of this.
I had so many questions.
So Jenny Folfner, our community development director, who is back with us safely, and the chair of our planning commission, Vince Workman, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I will try to be very briefing, kind of catch us up because we're an hour behind schedule. So I will just note that this item was directed to be in the planning commission work plan for twenty-seventeen. And there were two directives. One was to review the processes that we have in our ordinances that would allow someone to do alternative material. And the second item to look at was to look at what And the second item to look at was to look at what exterior materials were allowed. Are they appropriate? Are they not? How do we compare? Um, to that end, we did, uh, hire a consultant, WSB, to help us out with this. And you have this in your packet. It is much easier to read. But the gist of this is that the vertical line in the center, um, at the top talks about our administrative process where things are more flexible. They're done at the staff level, less coming to before you and the planning commission. At the bottom of that vertical arrow, arrow would be commissioner council approval is required. When you look at our market cities on the administrative process, Burnsville has more administrative process for al- allowing alternative materials than the other cities below it. You can see the line in the middle, or we're basically in, in the middle of that. And then when you look at the horizontal line, that deals with the type of materials that are allowed. Are we more conservative? Are we more flexible compared to our market cities? On the right-hand side of that vertical line, we have nonspecific materials. That would be maybe more general in nature. On the left, some ordinances are very specific when it describes architectural metal, when it describes brick, when it describes, um, concrete panels, very specific about glass, what you can and cannot do. So given that line, um, Burnsville is a little bit more, um, I guess, not as flexible as some of the other cities, uh, when it comes to that. We do have some specificity. Um, so that's how you interpret this. Given that, uh, when we talk about the process, the planning commission reviewed the process and all the planning commission background information. I think, we had links in the packet, so I'm not going to go over all that. Um, but there are differences between charter cities and statutory cities. So that's why are some cities so different? Our processes are reasonable and in the middle. That's the consensus from the planning commission. But, um, we are also more flexible and administrative in some cases. Given that, the planning commission thought we did not need to make any changes to our process. Looking at the materials, um, the ordinances do vary a lot from city to city. We put together, the information is so wide, widely varied. It was an eleven by seventeen flip book that our commissioners had to go through to try to compare materials. Because every ordinance is written differently for every city and it gets more complicated if it's statutory versus charter. So, um, it's really hard to compare apples to apples here, but we did, did the best that we could. And our ordinance, as you know, um, is updated periodically. There's housekeeping ordinances, there's changes to materials that we look at, uh, maybe every year, every other year. So our ordinance isn't the same ordinance it was ten years ago, fifteen years ago. Um, and the planning commission felt that there is, even though, um, our ordinance is updated, that there is room to be more flexible. And so what does that mean? What are they recommending? Um, they're proposing that we increase the amount of architectural metal that's allowed. Right now it's at twenty-five percent, that we go up to fifty percent. And certainly those amounts can be exceeded with a CUP or PUD. That's existing language.
When I read that Jenny, one of the things that, uh, for me, it's how, what does it look like when we go from twenty-five to fifty? Because we went through this exercise also in looking at, uh, metal and they've changed a lot as well. Because I remember back in the nineties, they did not look very good. And it was very conservative in with the way that we looked at, uh, at metals.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the planning commission and our consultant looked at information from cities of examples that were given. Councilmember Keely had given some great examples, what was going on at the Galleria in Edina, at the redevelopment project of the Home Depot area in Richfield, where there is more metal and maybe more than fifty percent metal. Those were presented and discussed with the planning commission and that's where they landed. What is it going to look like? We won't know until we get an application in, uh, but we know it won't come to you unless it's more than fifty percent. That's the suggestion to be more business friendly and to allow that.
And I remember those pictures that you sent, uh, Dan.
And there was a lot of corrugated in that. That was almost every example was corrugated and it was used in such a way that architecturally it was fine. I mean, it's obviously in the eyes of the, the beholder and everyone has their opinion as to what they like. But what we have to open our minds up to is, listen, the, the, the world of architectural design is made up of a lot of different things. And we all have our personal preferences, but should our personal preferences narrow the focus or narrow the ability for people to build things and build things that they believe are reflective of their company and their, the theme and the image that they want to project? And so we have to have a little more open mind on materials, much like we did with the housing.
Yeah. And corrugated has changed quite a bit since the nineties. I remember corrugated back in the nineties and it's like this raked thing that looked awful. And even when they tried to inject it with paint, it just bled all over the place.
It's not the pole barn anymore.
Right. Pole barn.
Yes.
If I can, on the, on the metal, um, the discussion and the proposed changes recommended by the planning commission, get to kind of further defining that architectural metal a little bit more if we're going to allow it. And one of the key things there is that it's used for its, um, used for its intended purpose. And some metals are designed for placement on wall panels. And that's, I think, the, what we're talking about, but some are not. And there's corrugated metal that's actually intended for floor decking, for concrete, that is not intended to be placed on the wall. And so by adding that clarification, um, that I think gets to what you're concerned and gets to more corrugated look of things, but its intended purpose is that it be placed on a wall.
And that's good when the definition is defined.
Correct. Now, that the last planning commission meeting, they did talk about corrugated metal, um, and it's the last bullet here. No changes to existing prohibited material. Corrugated metal is currently prohibited. Um, the planning commission wants to talk about that more because they want to allow some corrugated metal, but they think there may be some corrugated metal designs that come to them that they would like. But they're not quite sure that they want it to be administrative or how that would be reviewed. So we'll be bringing back some information to the planning commission, um, with, after we get your input on this. And it's, it's my guess that we would take it off the prohibited list and allow it as a conditional use permit then or something. If they're questioning what this would look like, um, to have it come through them, then take, take it a step back, off prohibited, and put it on allowed as a conditional. That's, I, I believe our staff is, what staff's going to bring back. Commissioner Workman doesn't know that yet. We haven't talked about it, but.
I do know.
I know what the concern is, but they had asked us to come back with some ideas, so.
Okay. Uh, uh, did you jump over the, uh, impregnated?
I did. If I can just finish the list here and Dan has a question. Um, the other changes that they, uh, planning commission is recommending is that we allow color impregnated materials to be painted. Burnsville has a long history of not allowing brick or ephes to be painted. And so take that out, let folks paint their buildings and then.
Well, it looks good in White's Funeral Home. They did it before asking.
It's lasted, it's, it's lasted the test of time too.
It does, and it looks fine.
And to allow cast and play systems to be approved administratively. Right now that's a conditional use permit. Construction, um, techniques have changed since that was put in place and, and, um, cast and play systems can be put up right now onsite. That looked just great. Bill?
To me, it's a great first step. And then if, uh, everything works and it's, and next year goes on, maybe we can expand more. So I think it's a good first step.
Okay. Dan, gee?
I'd like to weigh to define that corrugated a little more. Maybe, I, I, I don't like saying you can do corrugated metal if you have a CUP. It's like, it's either we allow it or we don't. And so we need to kind of, if it's made for the walls and that, then it's made for the walls. And we should be able to use it without charging them a fee to come in and tell us, yeah, you can go ahead and do that.
Well, let me, yeah, I'll go to Jenny and then I'd like Vince to also then, uh, give us his input as he looked at these materials. Did you look and feel and touch? I mean, I remember Gene Happy bringing all of that stuff in for us to look at, feel, touch and say, this is how it's going to look and, and so forth.
You know, the consensus is that metal, especially corrugated metals, become more of an architectural feature in building codes today. And that, um, a lot of the things that we saw at planning, um, a lot of the deviations were, especially on the percentage points. It was something that we had to approve as a deviation as part of applications. And so that was kind of the main reason why this came up. There is still some concern from the design piece of the planning commission brain that, um, needs to assess a few more things and get through. I think, you know, I don't want to speak for the planning commission, but, um, you know, administratively is always, you know, not always, but in, in certain cases it can be a positive, I think.
And I think that's what Bill is saying. You know, let's take a look at it and, and bring it in as a CUP. But if it really looks good, then next year, do away with the CUP if it's, if it's working just well.
Cause we have businesses.
That's what we do. We've always looked at things from, uh, you know, let's see if it works for a year and if it, and if it does, then we move forward. If it doesn't, then, you know, we rescind it.
And we have it now and it looks good at Menards and Northern Tool and various other places where, uh, speaking to just corrugated, that it, it works. And it, I think it's setting a precedence for what it could continue to look like in Burnsville.
Jenny?
Madam Mayor, just for, uh, clarification, uh, cause I was here and worked on both those projects. The Menards was built, was not corrugated. It was called ribbed metal material at the time and it was built for that purpose. So there's a difference and it, it is challenging.
It looks corrugated.
It looks corrugated, but it technically is not. And that is what the struggle is to allow something like a Menards that is, uh, the specifications were not the same as corrugated. And so maybe the language alone of the intended purpose gets to the wall panel.
Definition, because I hate to charge developers extra money for, that they shouldn't, we shouldn't have to charge them.
And that's what the planning commission's last discussion, uh, was struggling with. And we're trying to give them ideas to, to come up with this. So if you want to allow corrugated metal outright, uh, that would be good to know and that helps frame, makes the planning dis- uh, commission discussion much easier. And we can do that. But if you want to take baby steps, as I'll call it, and allow it as a CUP, which I, which was going to be one of our suggestions to them now, and change it later, that would, that's fine too. But just know that that's where we're at.
I'll go to Bill and then Kara.
See, to me, I want to hear from the planning commission because I trust the planning commission. So it's not today what I think. It's, I'd really first like to hear from them. And that's what I was hoping, that I was trying to make clear by saying that would be the first step. That we then would hear from you right away about that piece of the puzzle.
Yeah. Okay, Kara?
My view is, yeah, allow it. Just outright allow it. I don't, I don't know why it's a prohibited material, so.
One of the, I think the concerns is that somebody could come through with corrugated metal that, like Jenny said, is not intended to be used as a siding material and then say, well, the ordinance says I can do this, therefore I can do this.
Would that be a safety issue?
It potentially, I mean, I'm not a planner by day, but potentially. I think by us calling out and saying, is it, is its intended use siding material? Yes, then, okay. But just to have a catch-all, corrugated metal, um, can allow itself to, there's wiggle room there for other things. And I think that's why the, the conversation continues. Um, to kind of narrow down to make sure we're not adding any loopholes into the, what we're talking about.
Okay. I'm going to go to Dan.
I just want to clarify, that's a, that's probably a good defining point, that the corrugated men- metal in all those pictures that I gave was, was not necessarily, um, replacing siding material. In other words, it wasn't corrugated. It was screwed right to the out, outer fiber board with Tyvek wrapping and studs. It was more of a additional layer of design element that was added at various levels and various, various degrees. And so it wasn't dependent upon to keep the weather out. It was really more of, this is what, we have an industrial look and feel in our building and we want to use that to express that, right? And, and not take the place of literally strip everything off and put corrugated metal up on the studs. So, uh, I think for that reason, um, maybe the ordinance has to define it that way. That it's not a replacement for siding or building materials that are required to meet certain codes, but it can be applied and can be up to fifty percent.
It's architectural. It's an architectural feature.
Yeah, that's true. I think that's what the applicant that came to, to us and came to me, they weren't looking at it to, uh, replace. It was going to go over the top of an existing very thick wall, a very existing, uh, board and, and other materials. And it was like, okay, this is the final layer. It's not really doing anything from a weather standpoint or insulation. It's purely a decorative look. Yeah.
Jenny?
Well, I was just going to add, another material that's not, that's prohibited on the prohibited list is sheet metal. And sheet metal is primarily used in HVAC, um, heating, ventilating. We have it in our basement. There's a material that's not intended to be used on the exterior. And so that was just another example of a prohibited material. That's a metal that, for reference.
Yeah.
And there may be a purpose for that in a decorative look, uh, to get that flat metal reflective look. There may be stainless steel versions of that versus, um, you know, sheet metal itself, galvanized sheet metal or whatever it might be. But that, I, I can see that being used in a decorative way, just like corrugated. And I don't know why we predict.
Well, it'll be interesting because they're, the planning commission is going to hold a public hearing and then now we'll hear from the public and, and others about, uh, these different materials. Bill?
And just to close, I agree with you in that regard, Dan, but, but of course it has to be very tailored because we don't want to suddenly see someone use it as stainless steel siding.
Right.
Because we got to ta- you know, carefully tailor so that everybody's clear on, yeah, we can use it and we can use it for a certain purpose, limited to other purposes and.
Especially in the sunny day.
Well, we have to be very careful about how things look also. And so taking it through the public hearing and the planning commission having a debate over all of that and looking at all of these things, really understanding that there are some things in terms of, that it's just an architectural feature versus making it a.
That's not structural.
Permanent, yeah. If it's a decorative feature.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, what I'm hearing you say is you agree with the direction, the recommendation from the planning commission. And, um, you're interested to see where the further discussion goes on how we lay out corrugated metal, but it sounds like to me, you're in the same place that the planning commission is.
Brick too.
They're in a good leadership over there.
Okay. Very good leadership at the planning commission.
You have one of our businesses who will be coming to speak with you tomorrow morning. I directed him to come and speak with you.
Okay. Perfect. We'll proceed with our public hearing and the further discussion on this corrugated, how that works.
Yeah, because they're not opening till the spring. So they have time.
Okay. Excellent. Yeah.
And I would just like to say Eric Zuber at WSB did a fantastic job, um, getting us prepared for this. The background and the report that he put together was extremely thorough and, um, very detailed. So he did a very good job.
Very good. Anything else? You got good direction?
We got it.
Thank you so much. And thank you for your work. And please extend our appreciation to the rest of the planning commission. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now it's Community Builders nomination and members of the council, you received all of the nominations. In your background, Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. This year we did receive nine Community Builder awards. Uh, a couple of the names you may recognize from, uh, attendees at the beginning of the meeting, from the Burnsville Youth Collaborative and the YMCA. The council, of course, is, it's at your discretion, uh, which, um, which if any, or you would like to, um, consider for this award. And all of these awards will be presented at the volunteer recognition event that happens before the second regular council meeting in October every year.
Oh, I'm sorry. The Community Builder Awards happen at the council meeting directly after the volunteer recognition event.
Yes. Um, members of the council, you accept all the nominees as community builders and to move forward. Okay. With that, all nominees are going to be awarded and, uh, please prepare all of the information for the council meeting. Thank you. Okay. Now we move on to, uh, roundtable. And members of the council, you have seen this. The first item on the roundtable is the Crystal Lake boating start time. And, uh, you've seen the, uh, emails that, uh, came to me and then, uh, was sent out to you with regard to, uh, residents at, on Crystal Lake. And they wanted to, uh, bring to our attention that other lakes within the area in Dakota County, um, have their boat start time on the lake at seven AM, uh, rather than sunrise. So, um, I bring that to your attention and, and ask that, uh, we can, we make it, uh, we honor their request and comply with other lakes that, uh, are within Dakota County. Yes, Heather?
Um, Ma- Madam Mayor, we've, um, heard from, the council's heard from one person. If it would please the council, we could certainly do a community meeting to try and find out if there was a reason for that to be, um, earlier or later, I guess is the case maybe. We don't know if it was, you know, there was that, a reason for fishermen or something, people who fish. So we'd be happy to do that if that would please the council.
I, I would say that would be a great idea. Hold a, a, a neighborhood meeting with the residents of Crystal Lake and they have an association that they can pull together.
We can certainly do that and then maybe bring something back in January. And we're kind of late for this year anyway.
Well, of course.
So that's okay with, with the council?
Yeah. Bill?
I'd just like to say, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
I agree.
Yeah. Hold, hold a meeting with the, with the neighborhood because it came from the neighborhood. And so maybe the rest of the people.
Like a little quiet in the morning, who knows?
Yeah. And if they, yeah.
We'll find out for you. Thank you.
Okay. The next is council meeting time. Uh, council member Gustafson, would you like to take this? Cause I had it last time and we were going in this direction, but this has to do with, um.
We have talked about this many times over the years. And the last time I think we changed it was from seven to six thirty.
That's right.
And the reason I brought it up.
And it worked very well.
The reason I brought it up is that we have so many people that come to our meetings that are actually the business community. They're sending in their architects, their developers are all people coming into, for those type of processes. We do have citizens that come in for certain things, but our planning commission does most of our meetings for the public meetings, for the, for the public itself. And I look at what's been going on with our technology, with our streaming, with, we're live on TV. People get emails from us constantly about what's on our agendas. We receive information through Twitter, Facebook, emails, all of that. So I think the public actually gives us a lot of input before we ever get to these meetings, plus all of our background we get. And I just think as a city council, we should be doing business during business hours and be a little more business friendly. And quite frankly, I mean, I, I think for our staff too, I mean, there get to be some very late nights for these people and they're here from early in the morning till late at night, dealing with all this. And they're uncompensated for it. I know they got salaries, but long hours. I'd, I'd like to propose that we at least try this for a year and see how it works out. And I'd like to see a four o'clock start for us. I think that's a good time of day. It's, well, if you look at the background, Dan, the, the, the most people that come for all of our open houses are here like between four and five. So that's when we get our biggest input of citizens in the, into the building as well.
Yeah. And if, yeah.
It's impossible.
Bill?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Well, we also talked, because when Dan and I talked about this, he said four. And I says, well, we need to also look and see if other folks on the council, would 4:30 be a more appropriate time? Dan, does that help you?
Well, I'm not even thinking of myself. This is a position that is, every two years goes through an election. And I think you, you can't take it to encroach on the business day for working people who work for other people and take away their ability to run for office predicated on whether their employer's going to allow them, you know, out of work early. I think that's the beauty of an evening is anybody can run and that fits virtually anybody's schedule. I think that's more important. I held a higher priority for that, forget me, for that than people who have to work long days. Big deal. I don't have any sympathy for that whatsoever. And that may be just because I worked long days. But I think this is more about making sure that this position remains an option for people to run every two years to, to hold a seat, not just today's council, but for the, you know, forever. So I, I don't think that time is realistic at all, but I am not against moving it up a little.
So 5:30?
Is a very reasonable time that can accommodate pretty much anyone's normal workday schedule without impeding it and causing them to go, well, I wish I could run for council, but, you know, I'd have to ask my employer to let me out early, early once, you know, every Tuesday. And that just, it may or may not be worked out, but it just becomes a, a real problem. I, I don't know how many councils operate earlier than five. Do we have any evidence or information?
Well, Minneapolis, it's, there's.
That's a, that's a, that's a highly paid 100% job. This is part-time. I mean, you know, you know what we spend here. And this is, this is a part-time position around our regular day jobs. If you wanted to run for Minneapolis and St. Paul, you could get an office, a staff, a high, a high salary with lots of benefits. Of course, you're going to work during the day because that's your full-time gig. This isn't our full-time gig. So you, I don't believe it's, it's, it's fair to encroach on a normal workday when this is a part-time job around a normal work hour structure. And so totally support getting it earlier. I, I can hear support from my home saying, yeah. But I think if you go anything earlier than 5:30 are really making it difficult for people, future people to run for office. So.
I'd like to respond to that. We're a, we're a seven-day-a-week, 24-hour day community today. People work all hours. People that go to work at 1:00 in the afternoon couldn't possibly attend any meeting, no matter what time we had it on unless we did it first thing in the morning. There's always someone that will be precluded from doing it.
Are you saying we're underpaid?
We are.
You said a seven-day-a-week.
But that's, that's not the subject we're talking about right now. So I, I think there's plenty of opportunity for, for people from all walks of life to run for council, no matter what time of day we happen to have that meeting. It's, and I disagree with you, Dan. I think, I think long hours for staff is not a good thing.
You know, I, I don't know how you could say that any hour of the day would work. Do you know the numbers on how many people work in eight to five workday?
You know, I don't, but I bet we could get that.
It's about 80-some percent of the entire population.
Also, but you're still, there's people that are, are still precluded if you're using that as an example of why someone can't run for office.
Yeah, but I just, realistically, that would be unrealistic, I think, to go, well, do we have any? I mean, are there any suburbs who have part-time council members who start their meetings earlier than five?
Can't we lead the way?
You know. Well, I think there's rationale on why they're mostly in the evening. And I do, I do know of a few that start at 5:30, so.
Of course, the rationale for me is the business community as well that has to send people in here during the day.
Yeah. And I think when we look at the business community and to your point, because that was the argument that I, I put forth about two or three years ago. And, you know, we all agreed that 5:30 was a, was the time. That was the time that we said that we would start. But we had one resident who was opposed to it. But when we look at what our staff puts forth, it's around 4:30 and 5:00 where the majority of people come. So I'm looking at this and I'm saying, what is reasonable for all of us so that we can look at consensus and moving forward? 5:30 seems like a reasonable time for all of us. And we can get in and out. Our council meetings, because we do our heavy lifting during work sessions, our council meetings, most of the time we're out by 7:00, 7:30. Bill?
I'd support 4:30. I'd certainly support 4:30 on a work session, a day, for sure. I can, I can support 4:30.
Well, I'm looking at consistency. You can't say work sessions are 4:30.
Then I'll go with your 4:30 as you originally proposed and earlier, is what I heard you say.
Yeah. Well, I, because he went to four. And, and then 5:30 was the, two years ago was what.
I'm willing to support the 4:30.
I can support 4:30.
Dan, we're going to 4:30? I mean, when you look at it from a broader perspective with your argument, is 4:30 going to be doable? We can.
I think it's problematic for me and it's problematic for a lot of people who would like to run for office. I think it's a very bad decision to go that early. Very bad, as evidenced by all suburban, part-time councils that don't start at 4:30. There's a good reason for it. I think it's a predatory move, in my opinion. I'm surprised.
Yeah. And I'm.
I'm very surprised.
I'm thinking 5:30, that's what we talked about last time. We look at the background material and the, most of the people who come to the open houses that we have, the bulk of the time that they're here is around 4:35. So that's reasonable. So 5:30 is.
I have to live with the majority of what this council votes for. But I think that is a, just a horrible idea.
Well.
At that time.
There's 4:30. I, I know, I went to 4:30 because I'm trying to look at it, but 5:30 was what we talked about last time when we looked at all of the, the background information. And I think 5:30 is a reasonable time. Bill?
Based on what I hear you, Dan, hear you say, Dan, I'll, I will go to 5:00 if you can accommodate that. I mean, a lot of people are done working at 4:30. You may work till 9:00 at night. I, I'm, you know, again, I'm only, you know, modifying the idea only based on your schedule.
Well, and I, I don't, this is a decision about future councils too. This isn't just about us. I think that's another short-sighted decision to bring up something that just works for you and not thinking about the greater good of the city.
Don't think I talked about me. I talked about our business community and I talked about our staff.
You're, you're putting yes in front of the work we do. We do it all on camera.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. I, I can support 5:30. I think five is, do we, are we going to?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Kara what, what she thinks. We've heard from Dan G. and, and Bill. Kara, your thoughts?
I do like the earlier start time. However, I'll go along with 5:30 because we would be changing it in midstream.
Drastically.
And, you know, if we want to go to 4:30, I think that's when we get closer to an election time, actually. Because then people are coming in and they know for the position what the requirements are. Right now, presently, everyone came on board knowing what the requirements were. So I would support 5:30 now.
Okay.
We can check that out. If we want to move it to an earlier time, we can do that then. I think that would be, that'd be a little more fair.
Okay. So there are three of us at 5:30. Are you okay with moving to 5:30? So then, yeah. Staff, bring, bring back, pardon me?
About beginning when? Are you, we have to change the audience, our ordinance?
Yeah. Change the ordinance and bring it before us. 5:30.
Would it come back next meeting and start potentially October 1st or, you know, October? Or is that too quick?
I don't think it's a difficult change to make in the ordinance. I think it's just a time and.
I think you, you can put it on the next council meeting. It's, it's an ordinance that you just put together. Start time.
Yeah, it's not a difficult ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. And let's make sure that that's on a regular agenda. Just so if anybody wants to speak to it, they can speak to it. Because if it's in a consent agenda, it can, it can be pulled. Let's just make it on the regular agenda. Okay. All right. Reports on the advisory boards. Bill?
Nothing important.
Okay. Dan? Kara?
Nothing really important.
Okay. Dan K.
Well, just a quick note on the Chamber Public Policy Committee. ISD 191 came in and presented their levy proposal to get feedback. And they are, as everyone knows, they are going out for a two referendum vote this fall. And they are a district that has done a great job accepting less money from the state for the last 10 years and cutting administrative and keeping the classroom size and the money focused on the classroom. And I think that's an important note. It's maybe not something you hear about in every school district, that money stays in the classroom. And they have, they've done a great job innovating the school. And, you know, 191 has a perception challenge that they've been working on. And they've done a great job, I think, for everybody that may have gone through the, the school's open house and saw the new classrooms. They, they basically have adopted a lot of what the private and charter schools are doing. And I think that's to their credit, on a smaller budget, to be able to innovate and change and attract students.
Well, they haven't had a capital referendum for a long time.
Quite a while. Yeah. So one is a, one's a renewal.
This one is a renewal operation.
Yeah. And the second one is, in addition, smaller, but the renewal is bigger. So, you know, they have a tough road. They don't have the benefit that we do of just voting on a levy. They have to get the blessing of the voters. And so they, they have a bigger challenge every year or two.
Well, they have a, they, they get their state funding because they, the state takes our CI portion that funds education.
MBTA board meeting. The TPP update is begun. They're going to run through local city councils in early to mid 2018 and finalize by July of 2018 to submit to the Met Council. It is recognized and part of our, our comp plan. The State Fair Ridership trending over last year, even with that down weekend of rain. And the Orange Line Stop Groups are starting to meet September 22nd. Fire muster, well, I think Free worked. They, this Thursday night, they'll have their download meeting. And I, I know Friday night was a, a great success with crowds, beer sales, bingo, et cetera. Having Johnny home, I'm sure he's going to get invited back. He drew a huge crowd and weather cooperated very nicely in Saturday with Them Pesky Kids, I understand, was equally as crowded. My brother came down from Rogers to attend and his wife to listen to Them Pesky Kids. And he said, I think every kid that lives in Burnsville and the surrounding communities was at the fire muster that night. The teenage and, and youth population was pretty strong that day. So, great stuff. So the free entrance, I think, worked. And there was a lot of new stuff going on. So we'll hear some more notes from that. But that's, those three are the only things I have.
Okay. I have nothing important to, you, you can read the CVB Visitors Bureau minutes in the monitoring report that, that's posted. And things continue to go well. We had Modern Business TV here on the 7th and they were doing shoots all around, started early at 8:00 and they didn't finish shooting around Burnsville till around 6:30. So, and that went very well and very successful. So can't wait to see what happens. I think we, it will be running nationally on Fox and ABC, NBC, ABC or NBC? Yeah. It's nationally in November and we'll get those times in, so you can tune in to, to Fox and ABC. Okay. And that's it. If there's nothing else, Heather, staff, anything else? With that, we stand adjourned. Good night and thank you for being with us.